Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's regular meeting of the Portsmouth Planning Board for August 16, 2012. Before we get into the agenda, I would like to just take a moment to thank Deputy City Manager Cindy Hayden, who this will be our last meeting with this board. I think she served for nine years. She's been Deputy City Manager for 20 years for the city. I'm just going to say thank you to Cindy. There's nothing that I think anybody on this board could say or do other than just thank you. It would be probably an understatement to say any more than that. So Cindy, we're going to miss you. It's been a great nine years. Thank you very much. I know the whole board feels that way. I wanted to make it short and sweet. So good luck in your future endeavors. And we'll turn it over to Dave Allen, who'll be taking her place next month. So I just wanted to thank you, Cindy, for all this here. That being said, I'll move into the agenda. Could I have, to start, a motion to take items G and H under Old Business Public Hearings out of order for purposes of postponement?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Item G, under Old Business, the application of Richard P. Fecto owner for property located at 120 Spalding Turnpike, two-way Realty LLC owner for property located at 100 Spalding Turnpike, and five-way Realty LLC owner for property located at 80 Spalding Turnpike, requesting a conditional use permit under section 10.17 of the zoning ordinance. Can I have a motion for postponement to next month's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. Item H, under Public Hearings, Old Business, the application of Old Parish Townhouses Condominium Association owner for property located at 66 Madison Street, requesting amended site plan approval to revise a condition of previous site plan approval granted on January 22, 2004 by the Planning Board. Do I have a motion for postponement to next month's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Could I indulge the board one more time to take read-in items A, B, C, and D under Public Hearings, Old Business? Read them in together. We'll hear them as one application and vote on them separately?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye. I'll now read in items A, B, C, and D under Public Hearings, Old Business, the application of Lynn J. and Francis T. Sanderson revocable trusts, Paul J. Sanderson trustee owners, and various other property owners for property located off Spinney, Middle, Thaxter, Sewell, and Kensington Roads wherein final subdivision approval is requested between lots as shown on Assessor Map 167 as Lot 5 and Assessor Map 168 as Lot 17, and abutting lots as listed below. Said properties are located in the single residence B district where the minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet and the minimum street frontage requirement is 100 feet. This application was postponed from the July 19, 2012 Planning Board meeting. This application has been revised and the description has been amended accordingly. Also, the 10 abutters that were listed and notified. Item B, the application of Lynn J. Sanderson and Francis T. Sanderson revocable trusts, Paul G. Sanderson trustee owner for property located on Spinney Road and Middle Road, requesting final subdivision approval to subdivide one lot into four lots with the following: Propose Lot 1 consisting of 15,080 square feet and 100 feet of street frontage. Propose Lot 2 consisting of 15,010 square feet and 100 feet of street frontage. Propose Lot 3 consisting of 15,090 square feet and 136 feet of street frontage. The balance of Lot 170, map 24, consisting of 180,823 square feet and 219 feet of street frontage. Said lot lies within the single residence B district where a minimum of 15,000 square feet and 100 feet of street frontage is required. This application was postponed from the July 19, 2012 Planning Board meeting. The application has been revised and the description has been amended accordingly. Item C, under Public Hearings, Old Business, the application of Lynn J. Sanderson and Francis T. Sanderson revocable trusts, Paul G. Sanderson trustee owner for property located at 1,046 Islington Street and property on Spinney Road, requesting final subdivision approval for a lot line revision between two lots having the following: Lot 12 is shown on Assessor Map 171, increasing an area from 4,246 square feet to 15,001 square foot; and Lot 13 is shown on Assessor Map 171, decreasing an area from 2.88 acres to 114,723 square feet. Said lot lies within the single residence B district where a minimum lot area of 15,000 square feet is required. This application was postponed from the July 19, 2012 Planning Board meeting. Item D, under Public Hearings, Old Business, the application of Lynn J. Sanderson and Francis T. Sanderson revocable trusts, Paul G. Sanderson trustee owner for property located on Spinney Road, requesting final subdivision approval to subdivide one lot into four as follows: Propose Lot 1 consisting of 28,315 square feet and 109.03 feet of street frontage. Propose Lot 2 consisting of 33,107 square feet and 110.72 feet of street frontage. Propose Lot 3 consisting of 36,028 square feet and 100.66 feet of street frontage. Propose Lot 4 consisting of 17,404 square feet and 100 feet of street frontage. Said lot lies within the single residence B district where a minimum lot area of 15,000 square feet and 100 feet of continuous street frontage is required. This application was postponed from the July 19, 2012 Planning Board meeting. Who's here today? The applicant.
I am Eric Weinberg with Altus Engineering. Also with me is trustee Paul Sanderson. I will be much more brief than your reading in the hearing. We have a copy of the staff memo, and we have absolutely no objections to any of the stipulations in the memo. If you want me to go into any detail, I'm more than happy to, but I'd just leave it at that. You guys have seen the plans last month. We were at TAC, and we've addressed TAC concerns with the exception of the stipulations stated.
Okay. Do we have questions for the applicant? Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing if there's anybody in the public wishing to speak 2-4 against the application. Second time, third and final time speakers, 2-4 against the application. Saying no and rise, I'll now close the public hearing. We're going to vote now, board, on the four applications. The first one is Public Hearings, Old Business, and that's final subdivision approval for Assessor Map 167 as Lot 5 and Assessor Map 168 as Lot 17. Have a motion. Mr. Blanketsohn.
Just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, so we're just focused on A right now.
Correct. We're going to vote on them separately.
Yep. I'll make a motion that we vote to grant final subdivision approval subject to the four stipulations in the memo.
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. We'll move on to item B, the application for final subdivision approval to subdivide one lot into four lots, as read as item B, Public Hearings, Old Business.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval with the four stipulations as outlined in the memo.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye. Item C, Public Hearings, Old Business, for final subdivision approval for the property located at 1046 Islington Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve to grant final subdivision subject to the three stipulations in the memo.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion? Ms. Geffert?
That's the lot line revision one.
Correct.
Right.
Yep. Other discussion? I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye. We'll now move on to item D, which is the final subdivision approval to subdivide the one lots into four lots, as read under item D, Public Hearings, Old Business. Mr. Blanketsohn?
Make a motion to grant final subdivision approval subject to the four stipulations in the memo.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All of them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you.
Good luck.
If I could ask the board, for your indulgence, a motion to read in items E and F. We'll read them in together and hear them as one application and vote on them separately?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. I will read the two items in now. Item E, under Public Hearings, Old Business, the application of Michael's Realty Trust owner for property located at 1390 Lafayette Road, ESUM Realty Trust owner for property located at 1400 Lafayette Road, and McLeod Enterprises, Inc. owner for property located at 1190 Lafayette Road wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval is requested between three lots as follows: Lot 7 on Assessor Map 252 consisting of 14,358 square feet, being consolidated with Lot 9 on Assessor Map 252, where total area of 237,001 square foot. Lot 8 is shown on Assessor Map 252, increasing an area from 111,924 square feet to 125,509 square feet with 240.72 feet of continuous street frontage on Lafayette Road, and consolidated lots 9 and 7 is shown on Assessor Map 252, decreasing an area from 237,001 square feet to 223,416 square feet with 537.51 feet of continuous street frontage on Lafayette Road. Said properties are located in the Gateway District where the minimum lot size is 43,560 square feet and the minimum continuous street frontage is 200 feet. The application was postponed from the July 19, 2012 Planning Board meeting. The application's been revised and the description has been amended accordingly. I'll now read in item F, under Public Hearings, Old Business, the application of Michael's Realty Trust and ESUM Realty Trust owners and Four Amigos LLC applicant for property located at 1390 and 1400 Lafayette Road, requesting site plan approval to construct a 6,000-square-foot building consisting of a 3,500-square-foot bank with three drive-thru lanes and a 2,500-square-foot restaurant, and an 11,944-square-foot Rite Aid pharmacy store with two drive-thru lanes, with related paving, lighting, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said properties are shown on Assessor Map 252 as lots 7 and 9 and lie within the Gateway District. This application was postponed from the June 21, 2012 Planning Board meeting. The application has been revised and the description has been amended accordingly. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Portsmouth Planning Board. As you know, my name's Richard Uchita. I'm with the firm of Hinckley, Allen &amp; Snyder over in Concord, and I'm representing the Four Amigos in connection with this particular project. Jeff Dirk with Van Assen Associates is here as well, and Frank Montero from MHF Design Consultants should be joining us momentarily. We saw the Sanderson items on the agenda and figured you wouldn't get to us till about 8:30 or so, and so they're jetting in from wherever they're jetting in from. We are back with what I think is a significantly altered proposal to redevelop the former Yocans and Samuel Gas site. As you can tell from what the chair's reading of the matters that are in front of you, we have a lot consolidation of the Yocans and Samuel's Gas site that still is in play, even though we've revised our site. There are some lot line revisions that will continue to be a part of our project that occur on the corner where you can see that funny triangular area that will be pulled into the Comfort Inn site, as well as a small light line adjustment down near the back of the Rite Aid Pharmacy building that I think you've seen before. What you'll notice probably most remarkably is that, you may recall, we had a middle building on the plan. So there were three buildings at one point in our plan, a multi-use building that had some retail and restaurant uses there. We pulled that out of the site, and it's now gone, so that what we have remaining is a Rite Aid Pharmacy that's to your right as you look at that particular plan, and then a bank and restaurant building located on the left side with the drive-through facilities, as the chair noted in his announcement. The revisions of this plan are intended to accomplish several things and address several important areas of concern that we've heard. Obviously, as you can see, it greatly simplifies the site circulation that is occurring on-site in terms of the way that vehicles need to move on or about the site, whether it's between the buildings or onto the site to a particular building. All of that's been simplified by the fact that this middle building disappeared in all the aisles and walkways and turns and twists that were a part of that project when we had that third building. That's also enabled us to sort of simplify up the pedestrian movements on-site in terms of walking through traffic and across traffic and through areas because there's simply just less turns and less areas to have to worry about for those folks who are trying to cross the site on foot. It's also provided, as Mr. Tanner has noted in his staff report, room for landscaping improvements both on-site and adjacent to the parcel, but we continue to preserve what I think are the two most important features of this project. First of all, the redevelopment of two parcels that I think are badly in need of redevelopment. But secondly, and probably more importantly, the construction along Lafayette Road and Beverly Hill Road, although we'll go into that in some detail again because it's shifted a little bit. The main improvements that the state is looking for and that TAC liked to see in its meetings have been retained, and Jeff Dirk will take you through those again because, as I said, they've been jostled around just a little bit. And we can talk about those and the benefit that they provide again, but I think a lot of you are familiar with some of those improvements that were going to occur in the first instance, both along Lafayette Road and along the Beverly Hill approach to Lafayette Road. We tried to incorporate the significant comments from both, excuse me, the staff and the board, including the extended raised median on Beverly, excuse me, to prevent U-turns, and the closing off of the left turn on Lafayette Road near the Comfort Inn. And we've extended the raised median down Lafayette Road to enhance the right turn-in, right turnout area. And I think, again, you've seen that before. So let me pause at this point in time to have Mr. Dirk talk a little bit more about the traffic improvements as they've been adjusted to accommodate this particular project, and then we can address questions that you might have. And then, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd just like to address one of the proposed conditions in the approval because I think I've got a way to skin the cat that we need to be concerned about in light of the TAC comments in a way that may work for both us and the McLeod application that's further on down your agenda later this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Again, for the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Van Assen Associates and with the traffic engineers on the project. As was mentioned, the site plan that's before you tonight is much simplified. With respect to the traffic improvements that are proposed as a part of the project, as you heard, nothing has really changed, although we've brought in some enhancements as we've listened to the comments from the board. And I'll just walk you through the traffic improvements and point out some of the changes that have been made since the last time we were here before you. So as you recall, the access points of the property on Lafayette Road, this is the common access point. We've called it the north driveway that will serve the project and the adjacent Comfort Inn. As you recall, we've restricted left turns exiting that property, so we have an island that we've introduced there to channelize that traffic flow exiting. We've also extended the raised median along Route 1, and what that does is allow us to restrict left turn movements, both entering and exiting the center driveway here on Route 1, which is a right-in, right-out only driveway. As you recall from the last meeting, a concern was raised about this crossing distance for pedestrians. So you see, we've reintroduced the raised island that was in there that allows us, again, to better have better channelization for the right in and right out, but it also provides a sizable area for pedestrians to cross that driveway in two movements. The other element that we've done, and this was a comment of the last site plan, is you remember, we're providing a right turn lane by widening Route 1 westerly into our property. So that provides us the ability to have a right turn lane to turn onto Beverly Hill Road. There was a comment about the distance, this tapered distance or the transition distance, so as motorists is traveling southbound, the taper allows them to slow down and transition into that right turn lane. There was concern that that distance had been shortened slightly. We've reintroduced the distance so that it's back to the same size it was previously. So the taper has not been shortened at all. The other thing is that if you look at the sign and pavement marking plan, what we've added as a commitment that we had prior, there's a sign prior to entering the right turn lane that informs motorists that they need to yield to bicyclists that may be traveling southbound along Route 1. So that's been added to the plan. We committed to doing that previously, but it did not show up on the previous plan. That has been added to this drawing and shows up on the sign legend. The improvements at the intersection, as was mentioned, we are improving the corner radius to turn right from Route 1 southbound onto Beverly Hill Road and reconstructing the traffic signal equipment there to allow for trucks to make that turn in a much more efficient manner. We're also relocating the crosswalk that's on the north leg of the intersection to the south leg and providing a crosswalk across Beverly Hill Road. That allows us to change the traffic signal timing and phasing at the intersection so that Beverly Hill Road can have an exclusive left turn phase or a green left turn arrow to turn and head north onto Route 1. The other thing we've done at the intersection, which is a new item, is along the lines of bicycle accommodations. When we reconstruct the traffic signal, we'll be providing bicycle detection. So now, as a bicyclist pulls up to the stop line on any of the approaches to the intersection, similar to the detection equipment that's there to pick up motor vehicles, there's also going to be detection equipment to pick up bicyclists. So if there's, in an instance where there's no cars, but a bicyclist pulls up, this will cause the light to go green for bicyclists as well. So we're accommodating all users, pedestrians, bicycles, and motor vehicles at that intersection. Traveling along Beverly Hill Road, we have two access points into the property. The first access point is a right-in, right-out driveway. As we described before, we're widening Beverly Hill Road to allow for deceleration lane coming in and an acceleration lane coming out. The raised island is retained, and again, similar to the function of the driveway on Route 1 of the raised island that's there, this allows pedestrians to cross in two movements there, so a sizable island for pedestrians to store. The driveway to the west, which aligns with West Road, that's a full-access driveway to the property. We have a crosswalk going across that driveway. We are reconstructing and adding sidewalks along the perimeter of the property, so what that will do is it links the sidewalk that exists just to the north of the property in front of the Comfort Inn site. Now there'll be a continuous sidewalk from that point all along the property, then looping around on Beverly Hill Road and connecting up with the sidewalk that exists just to the west of the property. So those, in essence, those are all of the off-site improvements. One of the items that we did provide was an updated traffic study. As you might recall, we did not have a traffic study that looked at the impacts relating to restricting left turns at this driveway, so we've since done that, and that shows basically the shifting of that traffic up to the West Road driveway and what the impacts are. And what you see and what we've pointed out in that traffic study is that what it does is it increases the queuing on this driveway, about three to four vehicles, but that's all contained within the property. It doesn't interfere with the ability to access the site, circulate within the property, or gain access to any of the parking spaces within the site. In terms of some of the on-site enhancements we do have done relative to traffic flow, you do see the introduction of raised crosswalks at two locations along the center driveway here. So that's been added at this location here, and you can see it links up with the sidewalk that goes from the bank building, restaurant building, over to the sidewalk along the west side of that driveway. And you see another raised crosswalk at this location here. So we've introduced those traffic calming features. At the western driveway, we've introduced a raised speed table or a speed table at that location, given that there's no crosswalks. Same type of design, but there's no crosswalks, so it's a speed table at that location. One of the other comments that we had on the prior site plan had to do with how trucks access the loading area to the Rite Aid Pharmacy. As you might recall, we did have an area here near where the dumpster area is where we had provided a painted island essentially to allow the trucks to, in the original plan, they would come in by way of the west driveway, circulate through, traverse through that painted area, and then enter the loading dock area. We've since eliminated that and maintained the raised curb in this area here, so what you have is a linear curb along that driveway. And so now the truck route to get to the Rite Aid would essentially be entering the west driveway, proceeding around the building, around this area here as they've done previously, but instead of cutting the corner here, they actually will enter the property at this location here and then enter the loading dock area. So it's simplified those movements and provided and maintained a continuous linear curb at that location there. We've also introduced a raised landscaped island that you see in this area here, and what that's done is provided, as you might recall, we had linear pedestrian accommodations along the center driveway. What that does is allow a crossing to happen over to the Comfort Inn, and instead of having those pedestrians end up in a drive aisle or in a parking space, now they end up with an island and then transition over to the Comfort Inn. So it's simplified some of the traffic circulation within the site itself as well. This plan has been provided to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation with a letter from me describing the changes, as well as that updated traffic study. I contacted them today, and they have indicated that the original conceptual approval for the prior plan would still apply to this plan. They have no comments, and they've asked us that we can proceed actually to the formal design submission stage to them. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now, or I can turn it back to our attorney.
No, any questions? All we have, Ms.?
Do you want to wait till the end, or?
No, I just want to get, rather than calling different speakers up, if you don't mind, I just want to do. It's your choice, Cindy.
Thank you so much. All right, I'll dive in. I think your site plan's greatly improved, landscaping signage, vehicle movements, pedestrian safety, so that's great, commendable, and thank you. I did have, sorry, question about the pedestrian refuge at the three-way stop. And, you know, most of the islands, sorry, that I've seen have, you'll have an island and then through the center of it, you'll have an at-grade crossing for pedestrians to walk through. As I understand it now, I go along the crosswalk and then I'll go, like, uphill and then downhill.
Correct.
Is there some way that could be treated differently, that pedestrian refuge? And also, I love that the raised crosswalks that you've installed, what about a similar thing at that three-way stop? Or a raised intersection? Or, because it seems like you're going to have a lot of pedestrians going from Comfort Inn to here. So if you could address that particular spot on site.
Sure, and I'll start with your first question. We can certainly treat those differently. One of the comments that we had, we've done those crossings both ways to have it be linear. The concern, and this was actually a concern raised by the Department of Transportation, had to do with the fact that they view those, for lack of a better term, as kind of trash collection areas. So what they had required is that, rather than, we originally had the pass-through so that pedestrians could walk right through there as opposed to having to go up and then come back down. They had asked that, no, no, bring them back up and provide ramps. Their concern was that trash and things get stuck in the middle there, it becomes maintenance issues. I know you're speaking of the on-site island.
Right.
There may be the ability to do that as either a pass-through or at least do something so that it's not as pronounced in terms of the rise up and rise down, and that's something that we can look at. I think in terms of the three-way crossing there, if we were to raise that up into a raised intersection at that location, that would address it. It would be all level going across it, and then you ramp down once. And certainly, given the length of that traveled way, that might be very beneficial as an additive feature to what we're trying to achieve with the three-way stop, which is the traffic calming effect. I think, from my standpoint, stop signs aren't, they're not supposed to be used for that. So the raised intersection, I think, would be an appropriate treatment there and something we can certainly look at in conjunction with the site plan adjacent. I think it would be beneficial.
That's great to hear, and I'd be curious to see what my other fellow board members think.
Sure.
And if I can keep going, I just have one other significant question, which was, you have concrete sidewalks internally and down Beverly Hill Road, but I see that along Route 1 it's asphalt, and I think it's going to look a little odd. I'd much rather see concrete sidewalk on Route 1, and that's what we've got, you know, the new service credit union down the road is concrete, and is that acceptable? Is that?
Ultimately, I can tell you from the, those are going to be city sidewalks.
Yes.
So from the standpoint of, it's basically going to be whatever the city in this board, frankly, requires of those sidewalks. They're not state sidewalks of the city, from the standpoint of, as you're saying, aesthetics, maintenance, because- maintenance, because the maintenance of the sidewalks and all of that falls on the city, so they need to be whatever the city would like them to be. If they, if the desire is, we want cement concrete, it's easier for us to maintain and it's consistent with Beverly Hill Road, then that's the treatment. It's yours ultimately.
So you won't have, you wouldn't have a problem with that if that was a stipulation, that those be concrete?
If the sidewalk along the road here is concrete? The answer's no. We would not have a problem if that was to be a stipulation.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
Counselor Novaleen Clayburg, and then Ms. Geffert.
I just have a question. Could you comment about the traffic flow in between the two buildings? Is there anything noteworthy about that, or?
Well, I think what we've done by introduction of the raised landscape islands that you have here, we've done a couple of things. As you might recall, there were more curb cuts along the center island. So by eliminating those, we essentially have one center driveway. So that, it simplifies both circulation internal to the site, but also the number of times that pedestrians end up having to interact with vehicles. It's been, instead of having all of those driveways there, it simplifies it and makes it flow much more efficiently onsite. So that's one thing that's been accomplished. The raised landscape islands here are to discourage kind of people shooting through the parking lot there, so it slows traffic down and it makes the flow a little bit more orderly in the parking area. The other thing, as you might recall from the prior plan, is that we had a driveway very close to the entrance to where the drive-through area was here for the bank. The driveway now at this location here allows vehicles to come in, slow down, decide which building they're going to if they're going to the drive-through. Now they come around here and then enter the drive-through. You might recall it was a very tight turn and then they're immediately in the drive-through lane. So this has simplified the traffic flow, made it more orderly, and it's also, by getting rid of the center building, it's allowed the traffic to kind of enter the site, decide where it's going, and then circulate around the perimeter, which is much more efficient and safer for circulation.
Thank you.
Ms. Geffert?
This may be something that Mr. Uchida wanted to address, but can you talk a little bit about the impact on traffic flow of the parking spaces on the Comfort Inn property, please?
Certainly. We looked at the driveway here in terms of, you've got these parking spaces here that come out into the drive aisle. I know they're going to be coming for you, before you actually, tonight, I believe, and showing you what their thoughts are in terms of how those parking, the parking field's going to operate. I think what you're going to see is that a lot of the, what would potentially be conflicts of vehicles backing out of that area are going to be addressed in their plan. When we looked at it, our concern and what we never want to have is really having anything happening within the first 50 feet of the intersection, because as someone's entering the site, their primary focus is, I need to get off of Route One as quickly, efficiently, safely as I can, then get into the site, and then I start focusing in on onsite. Where am I going and what's happening on the site? So this first set of parking spaces here, they're going to go away, I believe, in the plan you're going to see, but in the plan that we've got here, those are more than 50 feet from that intersection there. So number one, the motorist coming around the corner there is acclimated themselves so that they've entered the site. So now they're looking to where they're going and any conflicts that may be there. The other thing is, these spaces here are the furthest point from the building itself, so in reality, they don't get used at all. So you're not going to see vehicles parked in this area here. We know they exist, it's not, so someone can park there. The reality is that they don't get used. Our concern from a traffic and safety perspective is to make sure it's not within 50 feet of the curb line of Route One, and they are setback sufficient so that you shouldn't have conflict. So I think there's a reality of the spaces that they're not used. From a circulation perspective, they're far enough away from Route One that a motorist will be now looking to the fact that, is there a vehicle, are there pedestrians, things like that? So it shouldn't create a safety issue for those reasons, but we think the site plan you're going to see will also address that.
So as a traffic engineer, you would say that having, and this is just to create a record, that having parking spaces that back up into a driveway like this should be addressed in the next site plan?
I would think that you may want to address, you should address them to the extent that you can. If they can't be somehow an island, let's say extending the island that's there, maybe you want to make sure that any of those interactions that might occur would happen as deep into the site as possible, is what our, the deeper that you can have any interaction, like, interactions like that happen into the site, the better. 50 feet is a minimum dimension. So yes, I would say that you'd want to, as you look at the next site plan.
Mm-hmm.
You would want to make sure that any conflicts that might happen along that drive aisle are going to happen deep into the site, if at all.
Okay, and then just, you know, as we move along the site, and I realize that the back portion is less likely to have lots of traffic or whatever, but again, you know, there are streets that have parking that backs into traffic, like on Market Street here, or not Market, yeah, Congress. But I guess my question is, from an engineering perspective, is having the space be perpendicular to the right-of-way correct, or is it better to have them angled? I mean, I-
Yes, angled, and that's what I was going to say. If you need to, as you're, if you're thinking about, potentially as you review the next plan, about retaining them, the angled spaces, number one, they're easier for someone to get out of, but also when they're exiting, the motorist that's in either direction, either if they're exiting the space or if you're driving along the drive aisle, you know that motorist is only going to turn into your, into the drive aisle in one direction versus crossing two directions of traffic there. I think it would simplify, if they were to be retained, to have them be angled towards Route One essentially, and then force, so the traffic comes in, it pulls into the space, pulls out, and then goes around the back of the site. Because again, most of that traffic is going to be coming out this driveway here.
Okay, so a lot of that affects their site plan. I guess the concern I have from the perspective of the site plan that's before us with the Rite Aid and the bank and restaurant, is that in my experience, if you have backing into a right-of-way parking spaces, the right-of-way tends to be wider so that you can accommodate that sort of pattern. And here, the right-of-way isn't, and I apologize, because sometimes I, it's hard for me to get a real perspective when I'm looking at a plan, I'm not as good as some of my colleagues, but I'm concerned that the right-of-way may be insufficiently wide to accommodate parking spaces. I understand that we're looking, when we look at the McLeod, if I'm pronouncing it correct, site plan, it's likely to be interim and there's more coming and all of that, but I'm a little concerned about this configuration in light of the adjacent lot, the size of the right-of-way, and the nature, and even though, for example, the parking spaces in their configuration are not your concern, because it's not on your lot, we have a right-of-way on your proposed site plan that doesn't seem to be able to accommodate what's on the adjacent site. And I understand that that's in flux and changing and we're looking at interim, but I'm a little concerned about that if, and I also realize, because I look at the site, that those aren't getting utilized now, but.
Right, you can't view it that way. The analogy that I could give you in terms of the width that's there is that if you were viewing, if you were doing a site plan review for a shopping center with a parking lot, the width of this drive aisle that's here is the same width that you'd want to have when you have traffic flowing through a parking lot and the ability of vehicles to enter and exit the parking spaces here. So it's a 24-foot wide aisle, which, when you have parking bays on either one or both sides of a 24-foot wide aisle, there's enough room for vehicles to be able to enter and exit those spaces on both sides of a 24-foot wide drive aisle. So the distance, the dimension that's there is sufficient for both two-way traffic and the ability of motor vehicles to be able to back in and enter and exit the parking spaces. So it's the same width that you'd have in a parking lot of a shopping center essentially. So there's enough maneuvering area.
But in a parking lot for a shopping center, I know that I'm driving in a parking area as opposed to what looks like a driveway until a car backs into me. So I'm, that's essentially my concern. So you've answered one of my concerns.
Yes.
Which is, is it wide enough? And the answer is, yes, it's wide enough. If you look at it like you're in the middle of a shopping center with parking on either side.
Correct.
But you're not, and so I'm wondering whether there are ways that you can control the traffic speed and the driver awareness to protect against that.
And I think that, I think that, going back to some of the earlier comments, I think one of the most significant things we can do is make this intersection here very apparent by having it be a raised intersection that's there. That's going to be apparent to anyone that's even coming in the entrance here. So number one, you're not going to have high traffic speeds at this location, because someone's coming off of Route One, they need to slow down to make this maneuver that's here. Introducing the raised intersection up at this location here will also force us to have signs and pavement markings and such as you're entering there. So it will introduce a traffic calming effect as well. So you're not going to have high traffic speeds along this aisle here. So unlike a typical roadway, that's not what you have here. It's an internal drive within the site, and I think that that does beg to dealing with the intersection that's here and introducing that raised intersection concept. And I think some of the other things that were mentioned with pavement treatments, the markings, differentiation of the raised intersections and the pedestrian ways, all of that are something that controls motorist speeds. And when you enter the site, it doesn't make it look like it's a raceway or a roadway. It does appear and has all of the physical characteristics of something that's a very slow travel speed environment.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Hopley, and then Ms. Roberts.
Thank you for proving in many respects, and especially getting all the signage on one plan and making it all cohesive. And with that respect on the signage, I, last month and again this month, I wanted to make sure that we were providing for those motors who want to go north on Route One.
Right.
And where do I go and how do I do that? And there, I do have one question. In the north corner at the stop sign, where I'm, when I'm going to be leaving the site, and I'm at that stop sign, and I'm looking at a directional sign at my 11 o'clock, I'm thinking that, I as a driver, I'm thinking this is a left turn motion. That sign tells me to go straight. SP1 is a straight ahead. I'm thinking that should be a left sign.
Yeah, probably, and I, you know, as I think about it, maybe we want to add, we've had now this raised island here, is to put a supplemental sign here as well, so that if someone's coming, they can see that.
Yep.
I think, I think you're right. I mean, the more positive guidance that we can provide for that, I think the better.
Just thinking as a motorist, I'm going to be going left.
Yeah.
To go out.
Right, and I think the thing is, and you've stopped, and the intent there was, you would only see that sign after you've made the turn.
Possibly.
And so, yeah.
So adding an SP3 at the stop sign.
Correct.
At the stop iron, possibly changing that SP1 to an SP3.
I would think that, I would agree with you, because of the fact that you, if, if you're the only one there and you're stopped at the stop sign, even if you miss that sign, that should be the sign that you see in front of you telling you to go in that direction there. I agree with you.
Thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes, I noticed in the, in your traffic study, which of course was really thorough, it was great, Table Three indicates, and I'm sorry, I just noticed this this time, a change in the level of service for the west Beverly Hill Road exit.
Yes.
From level of service C to F.
Right, correct.
Which you said could sort of accommodate four to five vehicles kind of stacking up, I believe.
Correct.
But I guess my concern was sort of a larger one, and I'm not sure there's any easy answer, but just sort of thinking about future development of Lot Nine, for which I believed 20,000-square-foot building might be proposed, and just thinking if we're already moving towards a level of service F, you know, sort of what's, kind of what's going to happen? How can we prevent it from getting any worse than that?
The level of service of, stepping back, the level of service of C is today's conditions. So that's just with the Comfort Inn traffic and nothing on the site. The level of service of F, that includes the 20,000-square-foot building.
Okay.
But, you know, that being said, I think as, when this building comes before you, I mean, we have in the traffic study accounted for it, I doubt that this intersection will get to the point where it's going to meet the warrants for a traffic signal, so I don't believe that you'll ever see a traffic signal at this location here. But to address the level of service of F condition, I think consideration maybe as we look at what's going to happen here is widening this out so that you have separate left and right turn lanes that are there. That would, if nothing else, the level of service of F, I think is going to still be there for someone who wants to make a left-hand turn, but it would shorten the queuing distance that's there. So even though we may have an F, that F might just be for queuing on a few vehicles, you know, instead of the four to five, maybe it's two to three, so we're reducing the queuing that's happening. I think that, once a plan comes for what's going to go here, that that should be a consideration at that driveway.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions? Oh, yes, go ahead.
Just a couple of questions that I hadn't caught before in TAC. Looking at the driveway that is shared driveway going across the site and comparing it to the other two driveways that come from Beverly Hill Road, I note that you've got a continuous double solid yellow line on those other two driveways, but on this driveway going from Lafayette Road to the back of the site, it's, the lines are interrupted. Is that because, why is that? Is it because of the parking spaces?
That's, that's part of it, but I think that, getting back to the idea of the vehicles that may be entering and exiting the parking spaces and the fact that that introduces an additional conflict potentially along that drive aisle, that it might be a good idea to extend those, especially if we're doing the raised, we're going to do the raised intersection here. I want to make sure people are on the right side of the road, especially when they get up to that raised intersection, so as they're going up, everyone's in the right place. So I think introducing that, we'd want to connect those. I mean, it's, you know, small gaps, and I think we should just connect all of those. I think it would simplify, clean up the aisle, and get to the point of, as you're talking about slowing the traffic down, signs, markings, the raised intersection, I think that would all benefit that.
And kind of related to that question, thank you, the, from the triangular island at Lafayette Road, the double solid line that extends from there is offset to the north a little bit from the center line, so it actually doesn't align with the one going further north. Is there, so you've got a wider lane leaving the site than entering the site. Is there a reason for that?
It has to do with the maneuvering ability of vehicles. If we had a fire truck that was coming down and wanted to leave here, the rear, the way the swept path that it needs to have is wider as it starts to make that turn, so that's the reason. But to your point of the offset, I think that's another reason why the center line should connect, because that's going to make sure that vehicles, as they're transitioning in that offset, they've got some positive guidance.
Thank you.
The straight approach speed table, what is that?
Basically what it is, is it's a, the pavement rises up three inches is basically what it does. So if you're driving, and this is done over about, the way it works is, if I'm, describe it as I'm heading from south to north going over the speed table that's there, what happens is, as you enter the site, at this point here, at the beginning of the speed table, is a parabolic ramp that raises you up three inches, over 10 feet. So over a 10-foot distance, you rise up three feet, three inches, and then it's level for 10 feet, three inches level, and then it drops back down on a parabolic, another three inches, basically, down to the pavement service. So what it is, is if you're driving 20, 15, 20 miles an hour, you just gradually rise over it, and it's a comfortable ride as you're going over it. If you go over at a 25, 30, 35 miles an hour, it's going to be very abrupt, and you may even bottom out your vehicle over it, is basically what it does. So it controls speed so that it's very comfortable to drive in the 15 to 20 mile an hour range. Anything in excess of that, it's not comfortable going over that, so it causes you to slow down because it's abrupt.
Thank you. Any other questions for, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we originally were going to have Frank talk about issues with respect to the site, but maybe what I ought to do is stop and ask if there are questions about the changes that have been made within the site from an engineering perspective, separate from traffic, to see if, in lieu of a formal presentation on that. And then I'll address the condition issue that I think Ms. Geffert was talking about.
I mean, I've got, I've got some engineering questions. It'd be nice just to have a brief overview and then.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
That's great.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Frank Montero with MHF Design Consultants. A lot of my presentations already been proposed out there, but I'll go through some of the main items. Rick, is that slide in here with the comparison of the old plan and the new plan? Basically, the last time we were here, most of the concerns from the board were the respect to the intensity of the proposed development. So we took another look at the site circulation and the layout and made a substantial change to the overall site plan by consolidating the three buildings into two. And this slide here shows on the bottom the last plan that the board saw, and the top one is the current plan. So the major change was eliminating this middle building here, consolidating the bank on the corner with the restaurant that was in the middle to create a 6,000-square-foot building to the rear. The original building combination in the front was 7,000 square feet, so the net The original building combination in the front was 7,000 square feet, so the net reduction was 1,000 square foot of retail space. By doing that, it allowed us to also slide the building away from this intersection above 45 feet. So we added a substantial amount of green space in this corner from the prior plan as well. One other change to the bank component is we added a third drive-through lane to that building, necessitating the conditional use permit application that was submitted with the revised plans. With respect to parking, the reduction in the intensity of the use required less parking. Under this current plan, we need 87 spaces under the zoning ordinance. We're allowed a maximum of 96 spaces, and this plan's showing 92 spaces. The nice thing about the lad is we created the centralized parking lot here and simplified the site circulation for the development. We've created a boulevard of trees and landscaped islands in the parking lot to create more symmetry and more direct flow patterns for the outside circulation. I'm sure Jeff already mentioned that we changed this driveway back to, if you recall, the delta island in the middle driveway was deleted on the last plan that was before the board. We put that component back into the, into the plan to add that pedestrian refuge back for the crosswalk. Some other minor things, the trash enclosure that was originally planned for the restaurant was directly behind the building here. That got relocated up into this area adjacent to that internal connector road. There was a concern from the board with respect to deliveries to the pharmacy facility. If you recall, the tractor trailer delivery access is from this rear connector road up here. They come down, and before we had them cutting across this three-way intersection, that was revised by opening up the aisle width in this area here to allow the truck to come down and enter in this direction as opposed to in front of the trash enclosure before. So we're able to put back a landscaped island adjacent to that trash enclosure there, eliminate the crossing of the stop bar and the car that was parked, stopped at the stop bar right The zoning issue that we've already discussed with respect to the maximum 200-foot length of travel before any traffic coming measure, Jeff's already touched on that. We did add two raised tables, speed tables here with pedestrian crosswalks as a component to those tables. By doing that, it allowed us to simplify the pedestrian links to these two buildings to cross over this connected driveway here. And we added a sidewalk feature on the opposite side of this driveway that created a link onto Beverly Hill Road as well. With respect to that rear connected driveway, you saw in the last slide, we added one speed table in the middle of that connected driveway. There's no crosswalk on that particular speed table, no pedestrian link up in that area. Some of the other minor things we took care of was simplifying the plans. We added another drawing, a layout materials plan, and removed a lot of the information from the site plan. So a lot of the construction information and specifications are on that layout materials plan. We removed them from the site plan. We clarified some of the graphics, some of the confusion that was expressed at the ramps, some of the line weights and so forth. We addressed some of those concerns and cleaned up that as well. Street trees, we had a lot of discussion about the prior trees that were planned along the roadway. The Bradford Callery piers weren't desired by the board, so the landscape architect proposed several different types of trees along the roads. I'll go back to that last slide. There was a desire to add some more internal trees at the back of the site, specifically behind the trash enclosure for the pharmacy, as well as that rear connector driveway. So we added a series of street trees along those two areas. This area here, we added three trees, and in this area, we added several trees along that edge. Some other minor things, the, we had a discussion about the ramp location on the side of the pharmacy. We moved that ramp back, so the bottom of that ramp lines up at the edge of the accessible aisle now, so we're cleaning that up. And lastly, on that new building that we're proposing, one component that's a little different is the bank component in the front, which is 3,500 square feet, is actually two-story. And the rear component, the 2,500 square foot restaurant, is a single story. So we have building elevations in this set that reflect that change as well. Those are the bulk of the comments we had from this board last time. As you know, we went through TAC, revisited with that, had a hearing on July 31st. There was additional minor comments that TAC had. We incorporated those into your set that you have here, and Stash reviewed those. Also, since our last meeting, there was an outstanding question about the status of the burial ground. We've since received a letter from New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources, it's dated July 16th, basically acknowledging that there's no burial ground on the property. That basically concludes the changes that I wanted to go over, and I'll just hesitate questions at this point.
Questions? I've got three questions, Frank.
Sure.
One is, do you have any concern, a lot of these pipes only have a couple of feet of cover on them over a paved area? You concerned about freestyle with only a couple of feet of cover?
Well, it's not the ideal situation, but I mean, I'm not too concerned about it because the site is very flat, and we have adequate flow through those pipes. They're not running at capacity, so I'm not concerned with the freestyle.
Okay. Did you, I went through your drainage analysis. Did you run the 100-year storm event through your drainage analysis?
I don't have my calcs with me, but we did it through the 50-year storm. We might have checked the 100.
You did, and there were some ponds were pretty full at 50-year. And I know it's not required, but, you know, we ask other applicants, what is a 100-year that we see quite frequently? What will that do?
Yeah. I'd have to look at the calcs. We basically submitted the calcs to the AOT, for the AOT permit to the state, followed their standards, and we did receive an AOT permit from the DES for the project.
I understand that. I think it would be naive to think that it wouldn't see the 100-year storm, and typically that 100-year storm seems to happen every eight years, so that's why I asked the question on that.
Nowadays, yeah.
On that. So the Note 7 on there, it's kind of a housekeeping item, but contractor shall coordinate, call and coordinate with TICSA prior to. Could you just add in there 72 hours prior to?
Sure.
On that? That's C102, Note 7. And I think those were my, my only concerns. I will echo some of the other board's sentiments. It's a double-edged sword in my mind. This application to me is far greater than what we've seen before. And what does sometimes frustrate me is where the original plan that we were presented had all these benefits to it, yet we see this plan, and there's so much, so many more benefits. So I'm really happy with what you've done, although a small part of me is disappointed that we didn't see this out of the gate. A lot of the concerns we have have been addressed. So I did want to take away that I'm very pleased with what you've done. I think the plans read much better. I think it's a much simpler site having two buildings than trying to get that third one in. So there's no need to comment on that, but I did want to make that statement that I wish we had seen this three or four months ago. So any other questions for the engineer? Ms. Hayden and then Ms. Roberts?
Just one really minor editorial comment, Frank.
Yes?
I think on the landscape plan, you'll see at the corner of Beverly Hill Road that the tree that's located between the honey locust and the zelkova is not called out as anything, just needs to be identified.
Yeah, I noticed that. One of the leaders is missing. Thank you.
My question was just for Mr. Dirk, when it's appropriate for him to address it.
Probably, if there's no other engineering questions, it's probably appropriate now, I would imagine. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Sorry, I know you've already talked about this extensively, but I guess the more I look at it, I'm confused by the three-way intersection there in the center of the, or to the right of the plan there, up, butting against the hotel property. I think I'm confused about sort of, it looks like traffic comes up from Lafayette Road and keeps going, and there's a stop there to the right of a, of an island. And then, but to the left of that island, there's also a two-way going to and from the drive-through. I think that's the part that is, I'm not sort of sure how that's going to work, you know? I see two arrows on there.
This is a...
To the left of the island.
This is one-way entrance from here into the drive-through.
Okay.
So the circulation through here is one-way only. So at least in terms of conflicts, there's nothing going to be exiting out of there.
Okay.
But again, to the, I think, because of the fact that there is the crossing that's happening here, because we have the crosswalk and we have the three-way stop here, I think it is important that we do look at introducing that raised intersection there. Because I think from the standpoint of, even if somebody proceeds from the stop sign, someone's coming from Lafayette Road, they're making the left-hand turn, by introducing the raised intersection there, everything's going to be very slow. And so you won't have someone that all of a sudden comes from that stop sign and is racing across this intersection, and someone's making a left. They're going to have to go over that, and they're coming back down, so it's all going to be very slow. So I think that will benefit that intersection as well.
That's good. Okay. I guess I'm, maybe I'm missing something. I see like an arrow going, I guess this would be west, just to the left of the island. And I'm confused because it looks like the traffic coming in from Lafayette Road would be coming to the right of the island. I'm trying to figure out sort of what that arrow is doing. Am I totally missing something?
I'd have to, you know what, it's a site plan-related, Frank. I think it's, I think what it is, is it, yeah, I'll have to look at the site plan. I don't like those, I'll tell you, I don't like those arrows. They are directional to get somebody to the drive-through. As a traffic engineer, I don't want those on there. But I think that's what it is. I'll look at the site plan.
And would those be on the ground?
They're supposed, yes. Well...
Rick, did you want to... Paige, are you looking at the arrow that's pointing toward the dumpsters?
Um, what am I on? C100?
The arrow, the arrow that's pointing toward the dumpsters, right?
Um, yeah, I think so, yeah.
I think that's a relic from an earlier version of the plan. I'm not sure you even need that anymore.
Well, I guess that's what I'm wondering.
Well, I haven't, I'm looking at C101, and there's an arrow that points toward the dumpsters.
It's on 101 as well.
Yeah, we have, the intent, Rick, was to, we did talk about that in the past. The intent was to try to keep that two-way for access on that trash truck to get access to the dumpster. That's why that stayed.
Because the trash truck loads from the front?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what.
Is it needed?
It's probably not needed for the dumpster.
Well, I mean, it's, you could, you can make it one way as long as the truck can go in that direction. I mean, it's difficult to make that turn in the 24-foot aisle to get to the trash truck.
I guess the question is, do you need, for just that one truck, do you need to have an arrow painted on the pavement?
We don't have to. It's, that's what, that's all it's for, is for the trucks. We can remove that arrow if it's confusing you.
Yeah, I think as a driver, that's totally confusing.
That's fine.
Because it's sort of, before you get to the stop sign for the roadway that, you know, sort of goes perpendicular to.
Yeah, we can take that off the pavement, that's fine.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Other questions for anyone else? No? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to address the one condition that I think there had been some discussion about a little bit earlier, that's been proposed in connection with the site, and that's how this site interacts with the Comfort Inn site in light of the comment by TAC about vehicles backing out into the shared driveway. And right now, I guess the way that that, the current condition reads is that there's going to be no work that's allowed to be carried out on the Comfort Inn parcel, I'm paraphrasing it now, until the site plan for the Comfort Inn parcel that conforms to the ordinance and the regulations has been approved by the planning board. And I wanted to make a couple of observations about that, that condition. My understanding of that condition was so that we could have some sort of mechanism that the planning board could utilize or could get to in order to address the TAC concern about backing out into that shared driveway. And a couple of things, and it's going to sound like I'm jumping on the other side of the applicant now, but I'm not sure that that condition provides the city with the protection that it needs here. Because the fact that that plant, that there's an approval of the plan for the Comfort Inn doesn't necessarily protect you from backing in and out if you don't have the, if that, if that doesn't get built, frankly. And so one of the things that we have thought about and that we're proposing in lieu of that condition is a condition which would essentially provide that certificates of occupancy for the buildings on our site, on the 1390, 1400 Lafayette Road site, would not be issued until there are curbing or barriers to prevent the backing out of traffic onto that shared driveway, and that those barriers and curbing won't cause the Comfort Inn parcel to be out of compliance with zoning. Now, why did I say all of that? A couple of things. One is, if you, if you imagine putting curbing down the, you know, all the way from the top of the shared driveway, all the way down to Lafayette Road, you're actually going to knock out a number of parking spaces, right? About 29 spaces. And so they're going to need to figure out how to reconfigure the Comfort Inn site in order to accommodate those 29 spaces. I think they're going to tell you later on this evening that they are going to go to the zoning board next month to see if they can get some of that parking out in the front of the property. I realize the ordinance doesn't allow parking at the front of the property if you were building this site new, but to try to pick up those spots there so that they can accommodate a site plan that has that curbing or barrier of some kind in place. But I think the reason why a condition that's worded like that works is because it allows the board to approve a plan tonight that creates the, that allows us to build the islands that need to be created down near the area of the shared driveway where we exit out onto Lafayette Road. It requires sometime before we get COs for the two buildings here to come, to come in with something. When I say "we," I mean the McLeod site, the Comfort Inn site, as well as us, to accommodate some sort of barrier or curbing that prevents that backing out. Because we're sensitive to that comment. That comment, you know, makes sense. We have plenty of time to do that because the reality of the matter is, given where we are, the fact we need, that we need to close on the site, construction, as Mr. Tanner knows, is unlikely to start till next spring. So we've got plenty of time to figure out, for example, if the variance isn't granted, how do we accommodate that? How do we make sure that that barrier gets up? But you're, you meaning the city, are protected because what we're telling you is that curbing or that barrier needs to be there to prevent the backing out in the shared driveway before we can get into the site. And that's really when the problem occurs, right? When we're on the site and that traffic is now moving through there. Until, until that happens, that problem doesn't occur because there's, there's not the traffic moving on-site. The other piece that's needed, though, in connection with that condition, is some sort of approval of the site plan that the Comfort Inn is going to show you that simply allows us to construct some of these improvements now, rather than a condition that doesn't allow us to even work on those as we're building out the site and heading toward the, into the construction season next spring. With the understanding that once we know by probably late September... With the understanding that once we know, by probably late September, how that ZBA relief works out, I think they'll be able to bring in a site plan. I know they'll be able to bring in a site plan that actually builds all of that curbing and the barriers in, because they'll be able to pick up that parking elsewhere on-site. And guess what? If that doesn't happen, if I'm wrong, and the ZBA doesn't grant that relief, there are other ways in which we think we might be able to accommodate some parking. Perhaps it's on our site with a variance. Perhaps it's by moving some other parking around to pick up some, but not all of the parking, and going for a parking, I mean, who knows? But it gives us plenty of time to work that all out with you all. But at the same time, you know that we're not gonna open with a condition where there's backing up into that shared driveway. So I'm simply suggesting that as a proposal or as a condition in lieu of the condition that's there. And I actually wrote it out, if that would be at all helpful to you, if you want me to bring that up to Mr. Tanner.
Yep, please.
And I'd be happy to answer questions about, I'd be happy to answer questions about the proposal. And I know that folks from McLeod are here, and that I'm jumping you a little bit out of order, because they're down at the bottom of the agenda. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tanner?
I have one question unrelated to what you just talked about, which is, previously, at some past meeting, you had come forward for your driveway waiver. And that's not before us tonight, but I assume that you are still seeking a waiver from the planning board for the number of driveways that you have.
That's right. That's correct.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just a quick question. Attorney Uchida, looking at your condition, you use the phrase "backing into the driveway." I'm assuming what you mean is, there'll be no vehicular access directly into the driveway, even forward, correct? I mean, there would be curbing or barriers to prevent any vehicles?
Yeah, I mean, other than obviously the driveway cut into the Comfort Inn, yeah. I was simply trying to address the backing aspect, which is really what the TAC comment was intended to do. But I wouldn't want driving forward into that either.
Yeah, okay.
I see what you mean. So it's food for thought. I think it gets you where you need to be in a much more protective way, and it allows us to proceed.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant before we open up the public hearing? Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I'll now open up the public hearing if there's anybody wishing to speak to, for, or against the application. Second-time speakers, to, for, or against? Third and final time saying no and rise. I'll now close the public hearing. Okay, board, just as a refresher, we are acting on items E and F under public hearings, old business. The first application is application E. We're in preliminary and final subdivision approval as requested.
I'll make a motion to grant preliminary and final subdivision approval subject to the four stipulations listed.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Gafford.
It was a good point that Cindy raised about the waivers. Does that go, is that a site plan overlay?
Site plan B, just before item D.
Okay.
Or C.
Other discussion on the motion. Hearing on a call, the vote for item E, preliminary and final subdivision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Now getting to Ms. Gafford. Actually, item B would be a vote to grant conditional use permit under section 10.440, use 19.40 to allow a three-drive-through facility as an accessory-use bank.
I'll make a motion to grant the conditional use permit.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Hayden.
And could I ask Rick to weigh in on his comment in the planning director's report that had to do with noticing?
Yes, I, this was an oversight by the planning department in terms of not including this in the legal notice. I checked with the city attorney, who agreed that the detailed description of what is actually being proposed provides exactly as much information as you would provide in the conditional use permit notice. Therefore, the public is adequately noticed of the conditional use permit, and you can vote on it.
Vegas.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. And we need a waiver before we can...
Yes, and this would be a vote to grant a waiver from the Site Plan Review Regulations, section 3.3.2.3, regarding the number of driveways per lot. And this requires six positive votes to pass.
Okay. And the waiver, and then if that passes, then we can go to item F for site plan approval, correct?
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, thank you. Since I was opposed earlier, I just wanted to explain that I'm in favor of this, because I feel that the plan has improved significantly and can really accommodate the driveways and the whole plan in terms of traffic flow, and everything makes much more sense.
I would concur with Paige. I voted opposed previously for the same reasons.
Okay. Mr. Hopley, did you have a comment?
No.
No? So we have a motion and a second. I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye. Item F, we're now looking for site plan approval. Ms. Gafford.
I will make a motion to vote to grant site plan approval with the five stipulations. Let me just make sure I've got the number right. Noted in the planning memorandum. And the following additional stipulations. First, that the three-way stop intersection in the middle of the site be a raised intersection. Next, that the west-facing arrow near the three-way stop pointing toward the dumpster area be removed. Next, that the east-to-west driveway include a yellow line down the middle of it. Is that a good way to say it, Rick? Okay?
Center line.
Center line. Yep. Next, that the Note 7 on sheet C-102 be changed so that it is clear that the dig safe notice is 72 hours beforehand?
Prior to construction.
Prior to construction. And for the purposes of discussion, but I'm not necessarily in favor of it, but for the purposes of discussion, the additional stipulation provided by Attorney Uchida, which I'm not gonna read into the record unless you want me to.
No, I think the discussion will probably prompt that.
Very good. So that's my motion. Got this one? Oh, wait, wait. Hang on, sorry. We have a second, but should I change?
If you want to add stipulations.
Let's, we'll take the second. We'll talk to the stipulations and see if that's amenable to the maker of the motion.
Excellent. So stipulation on concrete sidewalk along Route 1?
Oh, sorry.
Which is asphalt?
Yes. Acceptable to me.
Acceptable to you, Nancy?
Yes.
Good.
And on the raised intersection, if we could also, as part of that, make sure that we're taking a look at how pedestrians pass through whatever raised island might be in that vicinity?
That's acceptable. But I'm not sure how that comes out for them, but fine.
And that that raised intersection would be acceptable as design to the planning director and the public works director?
Absolutely. Fine with me.
And I believe note that stipulation number five is written may not end up applying, because that's essentially some version of what Attorney Uchida put forward. And then you had one.
And the directional signs leaving the site to the, for northbound Route 1 traffic. There's an additional traffic sign at the stop, left-hand turn motion at the stop sign, and then changing the sign that says "go straight" to "go left." And then I do have another one that I think is important. It's a very intensive site in terms of all the infrastructure. And Note 4 says, as written, "The applicant shall pay for the services of an oversight engineer to be selected by the city to monitor the construction of improvements within the public rights of way." And I'd like to add "and" on-site. We got burned on another project this year, because that particular condition wasn't there, and the work on the site didn't go according to the plan.
All of those are acceptable to me.
And there's a lot more work on this plan than there was on that project.
Yeah, and a lot of things moving, so yes.
Thanks. Second, fine with me.
So we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Cindy, go ahead.
Ms. Hayden.
Did you want to add anything relative to 100-year storm in terms of stipulation?
It's not required. It's just something I'd like to see.
Thank you.
Mr. Blenkinsop, did you have a comment?
Well, I mean, I guess we, first of all, since the motion is made, sort of has these two competing stipulations. The existing stipulation five, and then Attorney Uchida's proposed stipulation. So we sort of have to work through that.
Do you have a suggestion?
Well, I'd like to, I'd be interested in staff's perspective on the difference between "no work shall be carried out" versus "certificate of occupancy not issued," and what that means. Reading the proposed condition from Attorney Uchida, which I probably should have asked in this question, but when I read it, the last sentence of it, isn't entirely clear to me what it means, because presumably then, they're going to install these barriers or curbing, because they have to in order to get their certificates of occupancy. But the condition as worded says, "The installation of such curbing or barriers shall not cause the adjacent parcel to be out of compliance with the ordinance." Well, I think it will. I mean, it will cause it to be out of compliance with the ordinance, because if they don't get a variance, they won't have sufficient parking. So I don't want to agree to a stipulation that somehow we're saying they won't be, because they will be. So the concept, while still interested in hearing what staff has to say, I'm intrigued by. And if it allows the sort of project to go forward, I think that makes sense. It's just, as worded by Attorney Uchida, I have concerns about that last sentence.
I guess I feel that the stipulation that Attorney Uchida has provided is really good, much better than I did. I would like to take off the last sentence. I mean, I think that the intent, as I understand it, is that everybody's gonna work together over, you know, the two developers are gonna work together, try to achieve something, some combination of zoning board actions and site plan approvals that will result sometime this winter in a revised plan that has a barrier there and that complies with zoning or obtains a variance. I guess I don't see, I think that the addition of the second sentence does confuse it. And I would be very happy substituting the first sentence of this proposed condition for the condition that I had proposed. I think it is much better. It allows the project to move forward, but excluding the second sentence.
Ms. Gafford.
I just want to say for the record that I think that as a board, I would feel very, very uncomfortable putting something in that perhaps made the ZBA feel like we were requiring them to do something, because that's not what I would want to do. So that second sentence isn't okay. I would be happy, though, to include something that indicated a willingness to work with the applicants to, you know, try to achieve this. And the other thing I want to say is, for the record, we have, you call it testimony presentation, that indicates that as-is, it's safe. So that this board has some protection. It's not planning okay, from my perspective, but we have some protection in doing nothing, if that's the choice.
Mr. Hopley.
I'm in agreement that this needs to be addressed. I'm not positive that linking the certificate of occupancy to the, what you want to, we would want to achieve is the best course of action. And here's why. If, waiting till the certificate of occupancy is getting ready to be issued means the project's done. So now we've gone the entire, we've run the entire race, and now we can't cross the finish line, because there's a snafu with this condition. I'm thinking that issues should be worked out prior to the building permit being issued.
Change the wording of that to say "building permit."
Can't be issued for the project until we know what the end will be. Because when we get to the end, it's kind of too late. We've got a completed building, and they want to move in. And now I've got a parking lot issue that hadn't been resolved months before.
That may change the impact of...
Yeah, I mean, you see this a lot. "Oh, we won't have a certificate of occupancy." Well, great, but you could have, I mean, it...
And again, I think they...
Pride aid might not be happy with that.
They admitted that it was not gonna start till spring. So I mean, again, if we can't...
Right, you got time. Yeah, they're not gonna need a building permit right away.
Rick, do you have any comments on that?
Well, I guess it would be, what would you feel about separating a building permit from site work?
Sure. Well...
I guess I'm thinking that, I understand where you're coming from with this. I mean, I'm trying to do this balancing act of trying to not, try to approve the development to, at some level.
Absolutely.
And let them start moving ahead. If we were limiting it to the building permit for the buildings, but we're allowing site work to begin before this issue is worked out. Because there's a lot of site work to be done here.
Oh, yes. Now, I mean, granted, they'll want to begin foundations, right? I mean, typically, when you start the project, you're ready to go. And yes, site work starts first, but soon thereafter will be foundations, and off we go. So I don't know. I listened to the presentation, and it sounds like, and we see it, you know, the gavel comes down on projects every third Thursday, and we don't issue the permit for months later, because there's always other issues beyond a board. So I kind of think they've got enough time. But anyway. And I am interested in knowing what the proposal is for next door. And that really holds the key. But I'm with you. I'm for this. Hugely improved, and I would love to see it move forward. I don't know if that helps.
Well, I, I mean, I heard what the applicant said. So I mean, Attorney Uchida expressed concern that the restriction as worded was potentially too restrictive for them, because it prevented work on the adjacent parcel. And if I'm understanding Mr. Hopley correctly, what he's saying is, we won't allow work to start, not even on the adjacent parcel, but anywhere. Is that correct?
Yeah, right.
So more restrictive than the stipulation as worded in the memo.
I think it would be, the way, well, restrictive in time. Not in language, but in time.
Okay.
I think, to me, it brings a sense of urgency.
Yeah.
So, again, I defer to, you know, Mr. Blenkinsop and Ms. Gafford as far as...
Well, I mean, here's the question. I mean, I think what we're struggling with is, we have a site plan in front of us that has a site circulation design that we feel, for safety purposes, is dependent on something happening to an adjacent site. And while we have information in front of us that that site's coming forward with more developed site plan, we don't have it yet. And yet, other than that, and with a couple of additional stipulations, we're ready to say it's good to go. Now, the difficulty, I think, is one of, what do you tell this applicant? And is there a way, as Rick, Mr. Hopley points out, to claw back our approval if all of a sudden what's on the adjacent site can't accommodate the safety concerns we've raised?
I think that language does. I think that's our clawback.
Which, the building permit? Rick's?
Yes. I mean, I think we've heard there's a willingness to get this done. I think the applicant wants to do it. It's not like he's saying we won't do it.
And there's certainly enough room on the adjacent site to accommodate parking, with some issues about gateway and parking in the front and all of that. So I'm...
Is that general consensus of the board? Does that, does that language seem okay?
And pardon my ignorance, but generally, even site work could not commence without a building permit.
Mr. Hop...
But they would have site plan approval, which would enable them to go begin the financing process and go get the permits. process and get things in line and move forward with the exception of shovels, you know.
Which I think is great, we're not hamstringing anybody, so. Mr. Hopely, does that sound?
Yes, it does. So we want to massage?
Actually, I can, I can, I'd like to revise my motion to do two things. One is to eliminate stipulation number five, which is the planning memo, and then to say, and it's as simple as, I guess, building permits.
Issuance of?
Issuance of building permits? I was going to say building permits will not be issued, but issuance of building permits will not, on the site, map, you know, whatever, shall not be, well, yeah, no. Building permits for buildings on the site, building permits for the site shall not be issued until curbing barriers to prevent backing onto driveway shared with the adjacent parcel have been installed.
Period.
Or, or, and this is my question, it doesn't have to be barriers, it can also be, I guess, barriers. Let's leave it at barriers. But here's, here's my concern, Chair. What if they come up with something that's not a barrier but's acceptable from our safety perspective? Is that possible?
We'll add that to the stipulation. We could amend.
Well, but then do we, do we create too, acceptable?
I think we, I think we leave it the way it is.
Okay, barriers, because barrier can be lots of things. Okay. Then, there you go. Sorry, Jane.
Got it.
Mr. Hopely?
And could, instead of, the issue was brought up, instead of using the phrase "to prevent backing into," couldn't we just substitute "to prevent entering the driveway shared with the adjacent parcel?" Because that would infer either a forward or a backing motion.
Well, how about entering from parking spots?
Vehicular accesses.
Because we want vehicular access.
Okay.
So, one more time. Building permits for the site shall not be issued until curbing slash barriers to prevent entry into the driveway shared with the adjacent parcel from parking on the adjacent parcel have been installed. Tortured, but I think that's right.
That's fine, just for clarity purposes, if you look in both the stipulation or number five and Attorney Uchita's, they reference the site and the parcel by map and lot numbers, and it may be helpful, just for clarity's sake.
Yes, I'd like to retain those, I just didn't feel like reading them. I apologize.
Have those included in your motion.
Yep.
Why, I could never be Chair, but there you go. Did you get that, Jane? Excellent.
So that's all set, and is that amenable to the?
Yes.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? So now we're on, just to bring us all back, item F for site plan approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the chair votes aye. I would like to thank the applicant, the team. I think this, this development, when completed, will be far better improvement than the initial one, so thank you all. Thanks for the additional landscaping, thanks for the better turning radius, and thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Item G under Public Hearings, Old Business was postponed. Item H under Public Hearings, Old Business was postponed. That brings us to the last items under Public Hearings, New Business. Item I, Proposed Amendments to the Site Plan Review Regulations, Section 1.2.3, Developments of Regional Impact. This matter was postponed from the July 19, 2012 Planning Board Meeting.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that the board take no action on this. After reviewing your concerns from last month and reviewing the statute and policies and practices of some other New Hampshire communities, I think it's difficult to come up with a wording at this time that, trying to get at what I was trying to get at, which is to try to limit the responsibility of the planning board. Technically, as I point out, you have a responsibility to determine in each and every case that there be a, whether or not there is a development of regional impact. However, I think that your failure to determine is essentially a recognition that there, on any particular case, that there is not a regional impact. And so I think we can leave it. This has not come up in the time I've been here, the issue of regional impact. I think we can leave it to the, on a case-by-case basis and let, if it comes up as a, as an issue, have it raised at that time by a member of the board or by staff. I think at this point, it's just easy enough to just let this go and take no action at this time.
Do you have a motion on that?
No.
You don't?
I don't think so.
Okay. Well, thank you. That brings us to Public Hearings, New Business. I'll read in item A, The Application of Service Credit Union Owner for Property Located at 2995 Lafayette Road Requesting Amended Site Plan Approval to Extend the Proposed Sidewalk, Relocate the Project Sign, and Provide Additional Landscaping as Result of the Mergeur of the Corner Parcel at the Intersection of Lafayette Road and Long Meadow Road with Related Paving, Lighting, Utilities, Landscaping, Drainage, and Associated Site Improvements. Said Property is Shown on Assessor Map 291 as Lot 2 and Lies Within the Gateway District. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
I am. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Eric Svahn, project architect from Gund Partnership. We're here for the application requesting amendment site plan approval for 2995 Lafayette Road for which the project, the construction project, is due to be completed at the end of the month, all site work and the construction. The reason we're here under New Business is for the recent merger of the property 3005 Lafayette Road to the project property at 2995. The former 3005 Lafayette Road site was a small residential property on the corner of Lafayette and Long Meadow Road. In your packet of drawings that you have, you have several 11 by 17 sketches, and you have a large, full site plan of the project. Look at sketch one of four. The sketches were originally produced because the property at 3005 had not been before the planning board, so that we created sketches just of that corner lot. And then it was requested that we were, say that the Service Credit Union has already proceeded to finish the merger, so now the property is belonging to 2995. So I hope there's no confusion there. So on the sketch, we have Lafayette Road, northbound is at the top of the page, and Long Meadow Road is at the bottom. Through the TAC workshops and through the TAC meetings, there were three issues. One of, the first of which, which is not mentioned in Mr. Taner's memo to you, is the review of the intersection of Long Meadow and Lafayette Road for future turn lanes that might be the result of connecting Lang Road and Long Meadow Road in the future. So to that, we were asked to check the lane whiffs that are existing, and we're proposing to provide this area of an easement to the city for future turn lanes, a right turn only going north. It's only 165 square feet because this area on Long Meadows would be the town's right-of-way where the rest of the area shown along Route 1 would be the state's right-of-way. The second issue that was discussed is adding sidewalks on both Long Meadow and along, I'm sorry, along Long Meadow and along Route 1. Sidewalk was added along Long Meadow, both on the current 995 property and on the former 3005 property. That sidewalk was shown at six feet because of the major sidewalk that spans across the site and connection to it. We then ran into an issue with the main sidewalk, existing sidewalk on Lafayette Road. That sidewalk that was on the drawings that were previously approved through the planning board originally, through some confusion and possibly some error on drafting, the sidewalk was built at four feet. We've been through numerous issues with the state DOT in terms of drainage and fixing drainage in Long Meadow that once sidewalk agreement between the city and the state was hammered out and delivered from the state, the contractor proceeded to build the sidewalk. So as of today, or if you drove by today, four-foot sidewalk is built and a six-foot sidewalk is currently on the property. Sketches, the 11 by 17 sketches show additional site improvements for grading, landscaping, and moving of the project sign, which was located in this area, to right there. So in discussions with the DOT, it was clear that that sidewalk all along Route 1 should be five feet because of your maintenance equipment being a five-foot plow, the sidewalk needed to be five feet. We had proposed options for 12-inch pavers and for a 12-inch concrete strip extending down to fix the four-foot to a five-foot sidewalk. In discussions, it was thought or proposed by DPW that a one-foot-six sidewalk addition would be better because it would be more stable. We've agreed and provided that plan to you. We're going to hand out a revised sketch or a detail of that sidewalk extension. There were some discussions as late as last Friday between DPW and the project on tweaking the detail to make sure that expansion joints were clear and that the second addition is revising some molded wire fabric to some mesh, fiberglass mesh in the concrete mix is a better way to build this additional strip of sidewalk.
Thank you.
And the last issue that was discussed that we have before you is that the owner has agreed to obtain a license for sprinklers that are in the city right of way between the curb line and the sidewalk line. There's some sprinklers here for this grass area, and that's ongoing between City Council and the client. That will be provided. That's all I have.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak to, for, or against this application, second time, third and final time, saying no and raze, I'll now close the public hearing. This is item A, Public Hearings, New Business, and this is requesting amended site plan approval.
Chairman?
Bryce.
I'll make a motion to grant the amended site plan approval with the one stipulation that's in the Plank Department memo.
Okay. Second. Discussion on the motion? Call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. I would like to say I think this building is a shining example of what I think we, we think the Gateway District should look like. It's just, it's just been fantastic, so thank you.
One of the biggest questions people ask is why is it so close to the road?
Because, because that's the purpose. I've actually explained that quite a few times. I said, I've referenced other sites along Route 1 and said, see all the parking in the front and the building's way in the back 40, so thank you, you did a very nice job with that.
Thank you.
Could I ask the board to indulge me in reading items B and C, reading them in together, pairing them as one, and we'll vote on them separately? So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. I'll now read in item B, under Public Hearings, New Business, The Application of HCA Health Services of New Hampshire Owner for Property Located at 333 Borthwick Avenue Requesting Conditional Use Permit Approval. Under Section 10.1017 of the zoning ordinance for work within an inland wetland buffer for the construction of an at-grade 50-foot by 50-foot concrete helipad with 8,648 square feet of impact to the wetland buffer. Said property is shown on Assessor Map 240 as Lot 2-1 and lies within the Office Research District. I'll now read in item C, under New Business, The Application of HCA Health Services of New Hampshire, Inc., Owner for Property Located at 333 Borthwick Avenue Requesting Site Plan Approval to Construct an At Grade 50-Foot by 50-Foot Concrete Helipad in the Existing Hospital Emergency Room Parking Lot with Related Paving, Lighting, Utilities, Landscaping, Drainage, and Associated Site Improvements. Said Property is Shown on Assessor Map 240 as Lots 2-1 and Lies Within the Office Research District. I'll also let the board know that Mary Ann Blanchard's here for, on behalf of the Conservation Commission, so if you have any questions regarding the conditional use permit, Mary Ann's here for that, so. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is George Pantelli from McFarlane Johnson Engineers, and I'd like to take you through our site plan. If you could refer to sheet C 3.0, that's what I'll be speaking to. What I'll take you through is, we'll talk about the location of the facility, with some of the functions and design considerations that we put into it, with some key design factors that we incorporated as part of this process. We are locating this 50-foot by 50-foot helipad in the parking lot of the emergency room parking lot, right here. Taking up 20 spaces for that, or eliminating 20 spaces for that to fit the facility. The facility meets the FA design standards for a helipad, for the design helicopters, which were, have a range of helicopters, the largest being the S-76, S-76. And the location here is purposely next to the emergency room entrance, which is right in here. But when helicopter lands, they'll transfer the patient in the helicopter direct into the facility, direct into the emergency room. This area happens to be in the 100-foot buffer. There's a small stream that runs through here and into the back of the hospital property and the large wetland area in here. So let me get into just a few pieces about the facility itself. We've got a 109 by 109 cube area. It's, the outer areas here and here are used for safety standards, keeping people and vehicles away from the helicopter itself. Those are the FA design standards that are incorporated into the facility. The pad itself is a 50 by 50-foot concrete pad, and it will be elevated six inches. Part of that is for safety purposes and not allowing cars to park on the area, or if they're going to drive on it, at least they'll know they're not supposed to be there when they hit the curb that's going to be around this portion of the facility. The, excuse me. We're going to have, for safety purposes, three gates. There's going to be a gate up here, gate here, and a gate down here. It's going to stop all traffic. There's going to be an operations plan with the hospital. When helicopter comes in, security staff will man each of these gates to make sure that, once the helicopter arrives and or departs, that there are no people moving, or no vehicles moving during those operations. When the helicopter has shut down, we usually spend about 20 minutes bringing the patient in, doing paperwork, vehicles will still be allowed to operate through here with the security staff outside watching that, making sure that no vehicles go up into the area where the helicopter's going to be. Also, when these are down, there is still access around the facility, so there's no, emergency vehicles need to get through, fire truck needs to get through. There's nothing stopping a fire truck from coming through when there's an operation occurring. From an environmental standpoint, we're in a 100-foot buffer and our wetland line is right over here. When we raised this facility up six inches, we were able to take this portion of the facility and utilize a hollow paver-type material so that grass can grow in there. Grass is allowed in that area, it's not a weight-bearing area. What that did for us was to allow, or to reduce the impervious area of the parking lot by 3,700 square feet, so we're actually gaining stormwater capacity out of that process. We also had met with the. We also had met with the Conservation Commission. We talked about there are fragmites that run along through here. The result of that was a seven-to-zero approval to use BMPs, Best Managed Practices from DES, to address the issue of clearing those fragmites, which will occur once, twice a year, to make sure that the area is clear. Drainage patterns do not change. We, the high point is right here, so we've added a basin in here, or catch basin, should I say, which connects to an existing basin down here. We capture all the water that's off of here. We also capture water off of this, is sloped a foot higher up here and a foot lower here, so we don't change those drainage patterns and the collection already associated with that area. And any water that comes down through here is automatically caught by the basins over here. We met with FAA, the users, and New Hampshire DOT. They came out and took, took a look at the site. We got approvals from FAA and New Hampshire DOT for the facility. We are adding lights on the buildings for night operations so that they know where the buildings are, where the pilots know where the buildings are. Also, there's a set of power lines that are out here. Power lines will be lit, and they will also have orange balls on the, on the lines during day operations so that the helicopter pilots can see those. We also, there is a set of power poles that come in through here, providing power to the facility. We are taking those, work with PSNH, to actually remove them and bury them in a conduit area over through here and up and through here. So basically, we're also taking away obstructions for the helicopters by removing those poles and putting the electrical utilities underground. And I think that's basically it, so I'd like to open up the discussion to the board and provide any, write any answers to your comments.
Questions for the applicant? So, Ms. Roberts?
Yeah, I'm wondering about the approach plan. Looking at the minutes of the Technical Advisory Committee meeting on July 31st, it talks about, it looks like there was some discussion about how approach would be made to the helipad, bisecting the wetland, and it mentions sort of going along the utility lines, and then somewhere in here, I think it mentioned maybe an approach plan, and I wasn't sure if the plan set that we have includes an approach plan beyond that, or if you can explain using that, sort of how the helicopters will come and go from the site.
We'd be happy to. It was not included in the original site plan itself, but we had presented this to the zoning Board of Adjustment. Working with P's Tower and P's Airport and the helicopter operators, we know where the sensitive noise areas are, basically residential areas here and the residential areas here. Talking with the pilots and the tower, typically when you fly a helicopter, if you've got a road, major roadway, you put the flight track over that roadway. It masks the sound because it's just basically melding in with the automobile traffic. So basically, what'll end up happening is that helicopters come down sixteen, they will bisect the two residential areas here, and they will come around the building either this way or come around the building this way, depending on the winds, and then they will land. So basically, what we're trying to do is keep them away from all the noise-sensitive areas by also using this approach path. There will be times when helicopters may come from the south, they'll also fly over I-95, they'll be in contact with the tower at all times, so they'll basically just come back in from the south and just circle around depending on the winds again. So that's basically how those areas work.
Yes, Ms. Roberts?
And there are proposed about probably fifty trips per year?
Yeah, that was an estimate.
Looks like thirty-eight percent potentially maybe happening in the evening or at night?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, operations do happen on a 24-hour basis for, for the emergency helicopters.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Blanketsohn?
Is there any fuel storage?
No.
That's it, no, thank you.
Ms. Hayden?
With the, the lights, is it, am I correct in thinking the only lights that are directed upward towards the sky are the ones that are on the helipad itself? The impavement ones?
Yeah, let me just explain, unfortunately, our graphic isn't quite perfect.
And my, my real question is, are the lights that are directing the helicopter, and are they only on when you know a chopper's coming?
Yes, yes, the way it's going to work, that's, that's what's going to happen.
Great, that's, that's really my question. I think I'm all set then, thank you.
Mr. Gladhill?
The parking next to the helipad, is it still for patient parking?
Yes.
And you mentioned, I think it was twenty minutes, there could be a, with these gates are closed and you cannot leave the parking lot?
No, during, what'll happen, when the, during the operation of the helicopter coming in or going out, when helicopter is close to the facility, those gates will be brought down so that the helicopter can land with nothing moving, no people, no vehicles moving. At that point, when the helicopter shuts down and the rotors stop, then traffic will be allowed to go in and out of the facility as normal.
Because I'm just thinking, I'm leaving the hospital, wanting to go home, I'm in my car, and all of a sudden, something, helicopter comes down, I'm stuck in that parking lot for a little while, and also, what's protecting, how are you protecting the safety of the drivers or passengers if they're stuck in this car, they decide to get out of their car and move around?
Well, there's going to be security staff that are going to be out manning each of the, let me get back on the, on this location, this drawing here. There's going to be staff here, here, at this gate, and at this gate. So they're going to be out there watching and monitoring the parking lot. If a helicopter obviously comes in and people just get in their cars, they'll be able to access those people and say, you know, there's going to be a short, a few minutes that the helicopter's going to come in, you'll be able to leave in a few moments. If you'd like to go inside, you're more than welcome to do that, and make sure that that all occurs before the helicopter arrives or, or when the helicopter is departing. So there's going to be staff that are actively out there doing that.
Okay, kind of giving people, so if you see people leaving, you kind of give them some warning as they're coming out the door, or give them a window of opportunity to get out if they want to?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Blanketsohn?
This is, this is sort of related to Mr. Gladhill's questions. Will there be any signage at those parking areas, just even notifying people if they choose to park there that?
Those helicopter operations?
Yeah, that they could be subject to not being able to leave if the helicopter arrives?
Won't be specific, just note that there, that's a helicopter landing area.
Okay.
I've got a question, and I didn't see it, but, and this is the first helipad I've seen on the board, so I think it's kind of cool. Coolness aside, and again, I don't know much about these, but it, does it, does it ever warrant a four-foot fence with like privacy cloth so that, what prevents if I'm coming and landing, those spaces that debris, dirt, dust kicking up and skirting through and hitting these vehicles? Again, I don't know anything about it.
No, that's, no, that's a fair question. One of the great things about, when I was working with, with the, with the hospital, is they are familiar with other hospitals that have helipads, so they understand the issues related to what you're talking about, which is materials on the, on the helipad. As soon as that down draft, or rotor, rotor wash, thank you, too many things in my head. When the rotor wash happens, it picks up a lot of dirt. Typically, what will happen is part of their operations plan, which is actually written in there currently, is that they'll do a foreign object debris check. They'll go out, make sure there's nothing on the pad before the helicopter comes in, and when it leaves, they'll also go back out again and check that there's nothing there, sweep it off, and they'll do all of that process, either before or after. So that's how that will be managed.
So they'll do a FOB check, they'll go through, do they ever put little four-foot fences up with, with?
With helipads?
Fabric screening? And I'm just curious, my other question is, in New England, if we get ice and snow and you've got little chunks of ice there, and I understand, and I'm, I'm good with maintenance, if it's in a maintenance plan, but do we have concerns with ice and snow becoming loose when they land that that's going to kick up too?
No, because they'll, they'll maintain, the hospital will maintain through a program with their, with their snow, snow removal companies, that they'll brush the facility down, they'll make sure there's no accumulated snow on the facility, and that way it'll be managed in such a way that there won't be stuff coming off of it as, during the wintertime.
Is that, is that an FAA requirement that you adhere to, or is it a Portsmouth Regional requirement that, is it, is it, do the FAA drive the maintenance of this, or is it something that the facility does?
That's typically the facilities that do that. And they'll work with the operators. The operators are very good, there's three operators in the region, one in Maine, one in New Hampshire, and one down in Boston. We had met with all of those, actually, two of the three, excuse me, and talked to them about that. They provide a resource for the hospital in these particular situations. If they come up with something during the operation, they'll do that. One thing I would like to note that, the operators do work with the hospitals all the time, especially when they start operating at a facility, so there's going to be a lot of coordination and dialogue in part, prior to the facility actually being, becoming operational. The FAA also wants that, and they put that in their stip, as a stipulation, that they will work with, that the hospital will work with the operators to do that as well. So there's going to be an operational plan. And, all three operators talk to each other, they have a program, so that if one operator's unavailable, the other operator can, can take over for them. They know, the operations plan for that, let's assume that it's New Hampshire, that operations plan also is known by the two other operators in the region. So basically, any operator who comes in here will have an operations plan of how to fly the approaches, how to depart the approaches, and the operations within the facility itself. So everybody's going to be all on the same page during that period of time.
And, and I don't mean to be insensitive, but will the, will there be pickup and drop-offs? Will they be dropping patients and picking patients up?
Yeah, they'll, they'll bring in emergency patients from either another hospital or from an accident site as one option, or as one situation. The other situation is, there's somebody at the hospital that needs major surgery from another facility, and they'll, they'll have the people out, or they'll fly the people out, excuse me.
Okay, and just, it's kind of a point, but can you just put a note on there? I know we had it, the application before, it's just about the, the site contractor calling DigSafe. There's no DigSafe notes or, typically a DigSafe legend is put on a site plan. I didn't see any here, but I think that that may be a good note to have.
We'll add a notation for that.
So, thank you.
Mr. Blanketsohn?
Are, are there any barriers in between the doors into the emergency room and the landing pad? Any sort of wall or barriers? I'm only saying that as, if by chance you had ambulance or ambulances pulling up into the driveway at the same time you had a helicopter landing, I mean, is there anything that, any sort of barrier that, as the rotor wash, as you call it, is coming down and you've got people getting out of ambulances just a few feet, twenty feet away, like?
Let me, let me explain, let me explain that. This is the, the driveway, the Borthwick Ave's are down over here, they've got the access driveway into the emergency room parking lot. This is the emergency room facility here. This is an act two garage ambulance bay, so vehicles, ambulances actually come in and park in here, and then they'll come back out. Now, if you're asking, are they going to, if they simultaneously operate, if there's an ambulance that comes in while a helicopter is approaching, no, there won't be an issue because they're going to be, the way they're going to operate this is they're going to come in and they're going to come down, a hundred, a hundred fifty feet somewhere in there, they're going to come down and go back straight up and go back out. So they won't directly be overflying that roadway, although the approach area, it goes into that area.
I guess what I'm saying is, if I'm thinking of the situation there correctly, the doors, there's that little driveway, sort of U-shaped driveway, right?
This right here?
Yeah, that's a drop-off point to the, to the emergency room?
Yep.
Potentially, could you have people coming, pulling up in cars, going in and out of the emergency room at the same time you're having a helicopter landing, so there's?
Oh.
Rotor, rotor wash?
No, that won't happen because that, what'll happen, I'm going to borrow that for a second. What'll happen is, when, when they operate here, these guys will have access to stopping any vehicles from coming in this area over here. I understand where you're, where you're coming from. The question is, will vehicles be allowed to come into here and go through here while an operation occurs? No.
But it's, it's an emergency room, I mean, if you've got?
If it was, if it, if it's an ambulance, well, you're, what you're talking about is somebody is hurt, they're not coming by ambulance, they're coming by their spouse or?
Sure.
Their family member coming in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, will that happen? It could happen, and I guess we can address that piece of it as part of this process, but basically what would happen is that they would come in through here, security's going to be standing here, so they'll be able to, to actually stop the vehicle and, and deal with the particular situation at that time.
I mean, I don't mean, it seems like we have to think about that contingency because it seems in an emergency room that it's fairly likely that there's a chance that someone may be arriving at the emergency room at the same time there's a helicopter landing, and you've got a, a big helicopter landing within a fairly close radius or point to where people are getting out of cars and doors into an emergency room are opening, and you've got rotor wash and all sorts of stuff?
Now, with regard to?
Yeah, just trying to help, I'm, I'm sorry, Scott Maderis. McFarlane Johnson. Yeah, I think what, trying to, I think that you may just be misunderstanding the distance. The actual safety zone for the helipad is this dashed line here. So the actual safety zone is designated as that limit, and that's an FAA set zone. So this is a 50-by-50 pad, so there is at least a hundred feet plus to the door. So in fact, a car could pull up to that door and open the passenger side of the door and go into the emergency room through the automatic double doors without jeopardizing or compromising folks that are standing there. If that, if that occurrence happened, that wouldn't be an issue.
So they won't be prevented from getting to that point?
Right, and as, and as George said earlier, you can, oh, I'm going the wrong way. Sorry about that. Pardon my poor operation here. As he was stating earlier, this is an access way that's going to remain open, even with, the gating system was set up such that, you know, there is an ability to circumvent this process and go around the building, whether it be for the purpose that we're discussing or for emergency vehicles that, that need to. Relative to the ambulance, and I think what George was trying to say was, an ambulance delivery would happen in a bay right here, which is yet even further from the helicopter. So that process would not be inhibited by the, by the mere fact that a helicopter was landing.
Okay.
So, and I think just, and not to, not to step back, but hopefully this will, the question about the fencing, there are, there are never, you're never able to do that that close to the helipad unless you have an infinite amount of area where you can set them up way outside, because that close, this close to the helipad, you would not be able to put a fence because of the approach requirements for protective area.
Okay, great. So, Ms. Geffer?
I just have one question, and that is, why did you choose, and this isn't like going to result in a problem, it's more curiosity, why did you choose to put the helipad there as opposed to the other end of the parking lot?
Good question. You want to be as close to the emergency room as you possibly can be. The emergency room is in this corner of the facility. Actually, let me do this. Again, I apologize for the quality of this. This is the roadway in, this is the parking area, this is the building, and then you have automobile parking out in front of the building itself. This is the location of the, of the emergency room, so you want to be as close to that emergency room as possible to, to, when you extricate the person from the helicopter, there's very minimal time to get into the facility and be treated. If they were out over here, they'd have to go through the building to be able to do that, and that would be, that wouldn't be optimal. So that's the reason why we put it in this corner.
And I just meant the other end of the emergency room parking lot. In other words, there?
Oh, again, that's?
And I think, I think it's the same answer.
Yeah, you're, what you're saying is up here?
Yeah.
Why didn't we put it up there? Again, it was proximity to the entrance to the emergency room, which is actually in the bay of the ambulance bay. That's the reason why.
Okay. Counsel, Novlin, Cleveland?
Is, is there any concern by the hospital that there, there will be too few parking spaces because this is taking up parking spaces?
Basically, what happens, they have, actually, my notes are right here. The hospital actually has 752 spaces available. The zoning requirement is 562, so they exceed the number of parking spaces, it's 20 spaces over, reducing from 762 to seven, or yeah, 752 to 732. There shouldn't be a significant problem, obviously. It's this very small amount of the total, overall parking area.
Okay. One more question?
Yes, please.
You always think of helipads on the roof. Was there any consideration given to putting it on the roof?
There was, I mean, they, they had, they, the hospital had looked at it. Part of the issue that we have with that is that we have, although it doesn't show here, there's two large tower pieces, or towers to the building, so the proximity of that was an issue. You have power lines that run out in front here, it's another issue. The helicopters do have to fly over the, the power lines, but basically, if they make the approach from here, they can go straight out and then straight down, as opposed to being close to them, they go over them, they would be, oops, excuse me, they would be closer to the power lines if they were over in here. So that was the reason why. So that was the reason why.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll now open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wishing to speak to, for, or against the application? Second time, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. Okay, board, I believe that we have items B and C both under public hearings, so I'm looking for a motion on item B, which is for the conditional use permit approval. Approval.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the chair votes aye. Item C, same application, and this is for site plan approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval, but I do have a question, actually, and maybe it's for the department or just inquiring. Stipulation number two, the applicant shall prepare a CMMP for the review and approved by the city, and I'm, I'm looking at the site, I'm looking at the level of, of the project, and I'm, I'm really questioning the need of that. It's off, it's away from the public way, it's totally confined in the site, we're only taken out about a foot of material. I just, it's an active hospital, so I, I'm just questioning whether we need to go through all that for this type of a project.
I would agree with you, by the way.
Aye.
I don't have a strong, I don't have a strong opinion about it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, to approve the site plan, and if I get a second, to eliminate the second condition on the construction management plan.
I just have a question of clarification, which might change your motion. We didn't mention the stipulation about fragmites and the conditional use permit approval. Should we tack it onto the site plan, or was it understood that that was part of the conditional use permit?
I don't think it hurts to put it in as a stipulation.
Okay.
That's fine.
And just a note about DigSafe.
Oh, yes, thank you, DigSafe, yeah, on the, on the plan.
Yeah, on the site plan. So we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just a comment.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
As I've looked at the wetlands buffer zone, seldom have I ever seen on a plan a wetlands buffer zone that was so asphalted, concrete paved over with, in big, large buildings and whatever there, and I'm sure there's a history that was involved that, regarding all that, and I wasn't here for it, which is a good thing. So I, I just think that, I would think that we need to kind of be sensitive to further development along that wetland, or what's left of it, and the buffer zone. Just a comment.
Okay.
And just, just a quick response, I think that the hospital predates the buffer zone for sure.
Well, I was wondering if that was-
And it probably predates a lot of wetlands frags.
For further clarification, the hospital did do a 30-acre wetland mitigation, and they went into this site, by the way.
Okay.
Off of Lafayette Road, for those that care to know.
By a raise.
And I think our CONCOM is very aware of what you just mentioned and is very vigilant about any of the, and all that goes on out there.
So I think we've got a motion and a second. We've got two stipulations, I think.
Three.
Three, okay.
And the removal of the one condition.
Correct, right. Any further discussion? I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you, by the way. Those are great presentations. Move on to item B, the application of Paul Kamakis owner, the property located at 990 Lafayette Road, requesting conditional use permit approval under section 10.1017 of the zoning ordinance for work within a tidal wetland and wetland buffer involving the stabilization of a previously disturbed area with vegetation and the placement of boulders to make the area less accessible, with 27,000 square feet of impact to the wetlands and 28,500 square feet of impact to the wetland buffer. Said property is shown on assessor map 253 as lot 13 and lies within the Gateway District. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Eric Wynder with Altus Engineering, and I just want to make clarification on the notice, it's, the areas of impact are incorrect. It's a 90-square-foot impact of freshwater wetland, 260 square feet of tidal wetland, and 2,600 square feet of tidal wetland buffer. So it's much, much smaller than what's indicated in the, in the note. I believe it says 27,000 square feet of impacted a wetland and 28,500, so I'm not sure where that came from.
Thank you for that clarification.
Very quickly, in January of this past year, Mr. Kamakis was having landscapers clean up some of the backyard area of his property inadvertently. They rutted it up, they cut vegetation, they really impacted that area. We've gone back, working with Mike Como, have identified the wetland buffer, the wetland, both the freshwater, tidal wetland, the buffer area, and have come up with a restoration plan for your approval tonight, putting boulders in there so it's less accessible, removing all the existing topsoil so that when they come in and replant, there won't be invasives coming in. I can go into further detail, but in the effort of moving things along, I'll cut it short now.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant? Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Does anybody wishing to speak to, for, or against the application? Second time speakers, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. And this is item D, board, under public hearings, new business for a conditional use permit.
Chairman?
Mr. Blankensoll?
I'll make a motion to grant the conditional use permit as requested.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Hayden?
One thing for staff, I just wonder if we should, because what's on the actual application is so far off the plan, and the application will be sitting somewhere in a file, if we should just modify it to reflect reality, since it's like 10 times-
Yeah, actually, I just looked at the application, the numbers were just-
An extra zero, right?
No, no, the, the numbers that are listed there are the actual areas of the wetland and the wetland buffer on the site, not the area to be impacted. So we just, we just took the numbers from the wrong column of the application form.
Okay, great.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done, I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Move on to item E, the application of the City of Portsmouth owner and public service of New Hampshire applicant, requesting conditional use permit approval under section 10.1017 of the zoning ordinance for work within an inland wetland for the replacement of 48 utility poles and associated overhead wires and guy wires along a 1.2-mile corridor, starting at the Greenland Town Line and running along Interstate 95 to the exit 3 off-ramp, and then along the railroad tracks, with 100,517 square feet of impact to the inland wetland. Said property is shown on assessor map 278 as lot 1, and assessor map 280 as lot 3, and lies in the Natural Resource Protection District. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
All right, good evening. Let me first introduce myself. My name is Nick Goland. I'm a licensed engineer and project manager with TF Moran, and I'm here to represent PSNH for their proposed conditional use permit relative to the 3171 and 3111 line project. Now, I should also note that Mr. Jim Mayo, who is the project manager for Public Service Company in New Hampshire, is also here, so should there be any technical related questions as to the electrical service itself, its capacities, or otherwise, he's here to help us out and answer those questions. I think I'm going to start with the fact that we have had the opportunity to meet with the Conservation Commission, and I do see our CONCOM vice chair here as well, so I believe she'll have the opportunity to speak to this if she so chooses. In meeting with them, they reviewed two items, the wetland application itself, that's been submitted to DES, as well as the conditional use permit. Now, prior to us meeting with the CONCOM, myself, Jim Mayo, Peter Brits, your environmental planner, as well as Dory Wigan at DES, who is the reviewer of this application, had the opportunity to sit down as a pre-con essentially, to figure out what's the best way to go about this application, and to provide the necessary information so that we can streamline this process, so that PSNH will have the opportunity to move forward with this project. The means in which we laid out is the means in which we pursued, which brings us before you tonight. Now, I think one of the things that's important to notice, what, what is this project? What are we doing? The 3111 and 3171 line are existing power lines within an existing PSNH corridor that are old. It's time for them to be replaced. I think all of us have seen on the news or otherwise talk about our infrastructure and its need for replacement. This is a great example. These lines are old and antiquated, and they're going to be replaced with new lines to provide additional capacity. Now, the problem we run into is this line, these lines are located centrally within a fairly expansive wetland. You'll see on our application, that number sounds rather daunting, 100,517 square feet of impact. I think the very important thing to note is that only 126 square feet of that impact is actually permanent. That 126 square feet accounts for the actual utility poles that are being replaced. We don't get to do a trade for the poles that are coming out versus the poles that are coming in, so we do have to count for the permanent impacts with the poles that will be driven as part of this project. Now, to speak to the temporary impacts, I think it's important to reference how are, how are we accessing this corridor? Why have we gone about it in this, this fashion? Relative to the corridor itself, what you'll see through our site plans, our wetland impact site plans, is essentially a linear line, it's a linear corridor through the center of the corridor, so that we could access both utility poles with the least amount of environmental impact. The width of that corridor is defined as 16 feet. Now, the reason in which it's defined as 16 feet is that is the width of the prefabricated mats that PSNH would utilize for the purposes of going through the corridor. This is a fairly standardized methodology, this is what PSNH uses for the majority of their corridors. There is a detail that we've since updated our plans at a request of DES that provides the geometry of those mats and some general guidelines as to how they would be utilized. One of those points actually came up at our Conservation Commission meeting, that being that mats used in any areas of an invasive species are supposed to be washed prior to their reuse, prevents the, the spread of those invasive species. So relative to this project, we have two existing lines that need to be replaced. We believe we've designed the least impactful route to access those poles to be replaced and those lines to be replaced, and we've provided the necessary details and guidelines as to how the contractor is supposed to go about this work. So I would turn it back to the board as to any questions or otherwise in regards to the project.
Okay, thank you. Questions for the applicant? Mr. Blankensoll?
It sounds like you're aware of the proposed second stipulation regarding the cleaning of the mats when they're moved? How will you clean them?
That's a good question. I believe they would be taken to an upland area, and one of the key facets, and I'll step away from the mic for just one moment.
If you want to just grab that mic right there, just lift it straight up.
Thank you. The Ocean Road substation is located at the far proximity of the project area. The contractor's going to have the opportunity to use that as essentially as a staging area for the project itself. So they would have the opportunity to clean those mats in an upland area such that there wasn't the opportunity for those invasive species to be spread or otherwise in their, in their reuse.
And they wouldn't spread because if they're cleaned in an upland area, they're wetland invasive species?
That's correct. They wouldn't have the opportunity to live in that type of environment. And the invasive species, just so everybody knows, we're talking about common reed, it was actually brought up in the last application, fragmites. I know every time I have the opportunity to come up through Portsmouth and head up to Maine to visit my folks, you drive through that corridor, they're taller than I am, so it is a little bit difficult, but as part of this project, what you're going to see with the use of these mats is essentially they get, they get tamped down, and because they're there, that actually provides us an added level of buffer from the wetland area below.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hayden?
So operationally, how do the mats, this is what I'm picturing, you correct me where I'm wrong, that the vehicles drive over the mats, so you put down X number of mats to get so far down the line?
Correct.
You do your thing there, and then at the end of every workday, do those mats get picked up and brought back to the substation?
Nope, those mats would remain in place through the duration of the project now.
So you just add more and more and more mats as you go along?
Yeah, it's the connects, we line them all up until we're done.
Okay, and so, also an operational question, it says all the vehicles will be located in an off-site location and not in a wetland area overnight, so the mats are all laid out, the vehicles go down for the day to the end of the mat line, and then at night, all the vehicles come back and park at the substation? Is that what happens?
I believe that's going to be the location in which they park. As, as far as that stipulation goes, I think the key point of it was they didn't want to see construction vehicles parked on mats in wetlands. So those, those vehicles would be parked elsewhere, upland areas.
Right, I understand. And then, do you know how many workers are on site at any given time? How many people are arriving in their little vehicles to park and go to work for the day?
I'm actually going to see if I can defer that question somewhat to Jim. Question is, you know, how many employees typically, Jim and I had the opportunity to couple these together.
Okay, so, and so 10 vehicles, say, can be accommodated at the substation, is that where workers would park that are working for the day?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll now open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak to, for, or against the application. Second time, third and fin, final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval with the two stipulations, that all vehicles be parked offsite, not in the wetlands overnight, and the mats shall be cleaned when moved or, or from one location to another so as not to spread the invasive species.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing now, I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye as well. Thank you. I'll be handing the gavel over to Vice Chair Roberts for items F and G, and I'll be back for item H.
Something about the names of the project?
Yeah. It's okay.
So as the chair said, we're up to items F and G. Let's see, should I read them in together, I guess?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, thank you. Item F, the application of Ritchie Supply Company, Inc. owner for property located at 105 Bartlett Street, requesting conditional use permit approval under section 10.1017 of the zoning ordinance for work within a wetland buffer for the demolition and reconstruction of 7,980 square feet, foot, two-story building with 8,700 square foot of impact to the wetland buffer. Said property is shown on assessor map 164, lot 1, and lies within the Office Research District. Item G, the application of Ritchie Supply Company, Inc. owner for property located at 105 Bartlett Street, requesting site plan approval for the demolition and reconstruction of a 7,980-square-foot, two-story building with related paving, lighting, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on assessor map 164 as lot 1, and lies within the Office Research District. Who's here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Edward Hayes, and I'm the president of Ritchie Supply Company Incorporated, and I'm here to speak along with a fellow staff member, Zeke Morell, from Ritchie Supply, and our engineer, Alex Ross. Thank you very much for hearing our application tonight. Ritchie Supply is a third-generation business founded in 1957, and we've only had one location, and that is at 105 Bartlett Street in Portsmouth. We've been there since, like I said, 1957, and in 1984, we had the opportunity to purchase the building in question tonight, and we have been operating that building as an ongoing business since 1984, and that building primarily sells windows, doors, and kitchens and flooring. Something about the building, we think it dates back to the 1930s or 1940s. It has, it, basically, it's a poorly constructed building, it has a roof that basically leaks every time it rains. In the winter, if we get more than six or so inches of snow, myself and a team, a team of Ritchie staff members goes up there and shovels the, the flat roof that we have, so to prevent any further damage inside. We have an electrical system that's kind of been two-code, but has been piecemeal together over the years. We have HVAC systems that need to be replaced. In short, the building has outlived its, its useful life. It probably was never designed to- It probably was never designed to be so long-lived. And in the past, it's been used, as before we owned it, as a beer distributorship, a laundromat, and the Regan Coal office to sell coal out of there. We present to you plans to rebuild basically a significant portion of the building. We're staying in the same footprint. We feel like if we build a new building, rather than doing a substantial renovation, in the long run, we'll have a better building for our employees, for our patrons, and for the city of Portsmouth as well. We'll have a safer building. It will be sprinkled. It will be highly energy efficient. It will be safer. It will be a better-looking building and more comfortable for everybody involved. We, as a third-generation business in Portsmouth, family-owned, John Ritchie's my cousin, our grandparents founded the company, and we, you know, we're delighted to stay in Portsmouth. We view Portsmouth as the greatest place probably in the United States to have a business and to work. And we're just, you know, lucky we're there. So, we respectfully request that you grant our application tonight. And without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Alex Ross. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Zeke Morell.
Good evening. Zeke Morell, Ritchie Supply Company. Got just a few items I'd like to mention kind of about the project in general, and then I'm going to turn it over to Alex for specifics to the site. We feel the proposed project will be in keeping with the safe and orderly development of the city of Portsmouth. We intend to use sustainable design concepts to help the project and the environment in general. We currently have a wind generator on one of our existing roofs, and we intend to install provisions for solar energy gain on the new structure. Depending on using high, efficiently natural gas-fired heating and cooling systems, all windows and doors will be Energy Star rated for U-values and solar heat gain. We're going to use foam insulation or a combination of foam and other insulations to minimize air infiltration and energy loss. We also plan to capture some storm water from the new roof to support a rain garden at the end of the building. We also believe this redirection of the water will help protect North Mill Pond from shore erosion by surface water runoff. The proposed space will be a safer, more suitable environment for the employees and the customers. We'll include all necessary ADA egress requirements. We'll comply with all federal, state, and local codes. The proposed construction site will be cordoned off at all times with eight-foot-tall fencing, and there'll be no access to the general public. Proper signage will be in place to control vehicle circulation. Lastly, we're currently responsible for and uphold our obligation for the upkeep of a high-maintenance facility. The new building design will include low-maintenance materials and systems, giving us the ability to afford greater attention to details in the future. The upgraded facility is intended to look new and function as designed for many years so we can redirect our focus on the small details that enhance the appearance of the property and the surrounding area. We hope the construction and the new showroom will attract more people to the local businesses in the area, as well as increase the property values. With that, I'll turn it over to Alex with specifics on that.
Alex Ross with Ross Engineering. I do have some handouts you'd like to pass out. there is the existing conditions. That shows the existing building in orange. Then if you turn to the second sheet, what we've done is highlighted in red the portion of the building that will be removed completely and be replaced. The rear section, 32-by-100-foot warehouse, will be left in place and renovated. So, this is really a simple, low-impact site plan. The existing lot is developed, has been for decades. The new building will remain on that exact footprint. Some of the site improvements include to reconfigure the landscaped area along Bartlett Street to allow for city snow removal. I did meet with DPW, and one of their concerns is that current sidewalk is just not wide enough with the existing landscaped area for them to clear the snow there, and they wanted us to push that back. So, we've shown that on the plan to assure they have over five feet to work there. Another improvement would be to install gutters, downspouts, and rain gardens, as shown. Currently, nearly all the roof runoff flows directly onto the paved areas. So, what we're trying to do is collect as much as we can from the roof runoff and direct it to the rain gardens. Another site improvement would be to remove and relocate the utility poles. There's some utility poles at the rear of the building that are pretty ancient and are in need of replacement. So, what we'd like to do is remove those and install a new pole on the corner of the lot here. We did meet with PSNH, and they approved that scheme. We have a memo to that effect. Another site improvement would be to install a new drain line for future stormwater and sewer separation. And that's shown on the plan here, just as a dashed line, more in detail on the sheets in the plan set. But what's happening is, in the lumberyard, there's a system of catch basins that collect stormwater and discharge directly into a city sewer line. With all the improvements around the city, and this area has actually had some recent work done with the stormwater system, we're looking for a way to have that separation. So, we are showing a line there. That's for future separation. This parcel is surrounded by different ownership, and we don't have authority currently to do that separation, but we have shown the line so that in the future, when we are allowed to, it will facilitate that. We did meet with TAC for a work session, and then on July 31st, TAC voted to approve the site plan with a list of stipulations. And I'll quickly run through those. The first one was they wanted the sidewalk altered. They wanted the width of the sidewalk to increase to five feet. And that's this sidewalk here on the front of the building. The drawings have been revised to show a five-foot sidewalk. Another item was to extend the sidewalk in front of parking spaces one and three. And that would be up here by the front of the building. We did revise the plan to reflect that. Another sidewalk item, to extend at least across the front parking space, number 13. And that's down here. The plan was altered to reflect that. Item number two of the stipulations from TAC, a detail shall be added for the proposed drain line in the building to extend the pipe one and a half to two feet. And we have extended that pipe, and we've added a detail for that on drawing three of the plan set. Continuing on, item three, on the rain garden cross-section detail, TAC wanted the top surface to be specified as shredded mulch. This again shows up on drawing number three, and that has been altered to specify shredded mulch. Item four, the applicant shall prepare a plan showing travel lane striping. We did do that, and that also shows up on drawing five with more details. That was reviewed with DPW to make sure that was laid out the way they wanted it. Item five, final water connections shall be reviewed and approved by the city water department. We did alter note five on sheet two to include that language. Then the last item on the list, the applicant shall prepare a construction management and mitigation plan. A construction management and mitigation plan is anticipated, and the necessary forms have been obtained from Jane at the planning department. The owner plans on doing everything that's required there. So, that's it for the stipulations. More information for the project, we did meet with the Conservation Commission last week. We are in the wetland buffer. A conditional use permit was required, as well as a state wetland permit. The board voted to recommend approval and sign the wetland permit. So, again, this is a real simple site improvement. Everything is developed, the footprint is there, and we're minimizing impact and improving the overall site. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Mr. Hopley.
Alex, just because of an earlier application, I, help me, I'm trying to find the five-foot dimension for the sidewalk.
I know.
Sure.
Want to tell me where that is?
Yes. So, on sheet two, that sidewalk in front of the building is a five-foot sidewalk. This is a busy plan set, but if you look at parking space number four, there's a note right there that says proposed five-foot-wide concrete sidewalk.
And I apologize, I thought we were talking about the sidewalk along Bartlett Street.
Oh, yes.
Because I figured that was the city sidewalk, and that's why they were interested in its width, because I assume they're not going to be doing any maintenance or anything on
No.
...the sidewalk along Bartlett.
And you're right, there's two sidewalk issues. The one along Bartlett was the tight fit, and then the one in front of the building was what TAC wanted us to widen.
So, are we rebuilding the Bartlett Street sidewalk?
We're making it a little wider by bringing in the rain garden or the landscaped area, because right now, the landscaped area is such that it gets very narrow next to utility poles, and you have less than five feet there.
So...
So, that the actual sidewalk on Bartlett Street won't be rebuilt. We're just giving them more room there.
Well, does that mean you're going to be adding to its width?
We'll be adding to its width.
Should there be a detail about how that will join with the existing in terms of doweling or whatever?
Well, we did show some sidewalk details. One of the sidewalk alterations is we're having an overflow for the rain gardens, and there's a catch basin in front of the building in Bartlett Street. To get a drain line into that catch basin, we saw cut just a very small section of sidewalk, and then, of course, rebuild it. So, that shows up on drawing sheet four.
Yep. But, so you're saying that the, for, other than that small area, the rest of that sidewalk will pretty much stay as-is? Or is it widening?
It will have to widen, as well as, on sheet four, you see the catch basin number two drainage in the upper-left of that sheet. There'll be a new composed concrete walkway to the front doors of the building. So, all that concrete will be the same detail as in our typical sidewalk detail on that sheet.
Okay.
Follow-up on that. On sheet three, if you look at the proposed rain garden detail, I'm not sure if that was clear, you see where there's a circle around the utility poles showing where they're going to expand the sidewalks into locations. It's a minor expansion.
Well, I was just, I guess, similar to our widening of the Route 1 Service Credit Union, I mean, we want to make sure that our sidewalks, you know, act together once the new piece gets added on, and typically, you might drill and dowel, you know, to reinforce and join the two, and there just wasn't a detail anywhere about that. So, I'm thinking you might want to address that.
That can be addressed.
Then when I review these site plans, I always have my other hat on, and I look for water lines. And I found the two-inch water line coming off Bartlett into the front of the building, and then I found the six-inch and the eight-inch ductal line water lines that head that-a-way. I don't, and then I found note 5C. I never found where we make that connection for the sprinkler system.
It's anticipated that that connection will be back at the corner of the building here. We have been talking to DPW, as well as Underwood engineers who did a huge plan in this area recently for the city stormwater lines. So, at the rear of the building, there's a one-inch line, a two-inch line, and a six-inch line. And that's where we'd like to tie in. Of course, that location and the type of tie-in would be approved by the water department.
I guess typically, our site plans show that connection, and it doesn't show it. So, I think there should be, I mean, it's just a line, and then a note saying, you know, sprinkle a connection. Are you going to also bring, I take it the domestic is going to be the one in the front?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I really think the site plan should show where the fire lines coming in, at least some idea of it.
We did review that with TAC, and they kind of went, or everyone went back and forth, what would be the best solution there, where those lines go. I spoke with Dave DeFossis on that. Some of those rear lines out back, there's no information. So, at that point, he just wanted a note on the plan saying, city water department must review and approve.
Okay. Different than what we usually do.
Yes, Mr. Blankens, uh?
Alex, question for you regarding rainwater. When it hits the paved area in between the building and North Mill Pond, where does it go?
Right now, the grade is such that when the rainwater hits the paved area, a Right now, the grade is such that when the rainwater hits the paved area along or closest to the pond, it flows towards the building. So there's kind of a swale or a low point halfway through the parking lot. It then flows to a catch basin, and then discharges into the pond.
Okay, and is that the condition that will remain after the project?
Yes, that's correct.
And is there any way, I mean, is that is that the appropriate way of doing it, discharging directly into North Mill Pond? I mean, is there any way? I'm sorry, this is a really awkward question, but I guess that's the way you'd normally do it? Is that, that's how you'd do it?
Well, there's lots of different ways of handling the runoff, and we looked at different forms of protection, and even putting some vegetation along the side of North Mill Pond. We're really limited here. This lot just follows that property line. So the actual majority of the parking lot and the traveled way is another owner. So that parking lot, the grades, the layout, everything is kind of set.
Okay, even where the catch basin is, is another parcel?
That's right, that catch basin is on someone else's land.
Yes, Cindy.
Normally, we have a photometric plan. I know you're using what look to be dark sky-friendly wall packs and gooseneck lights, but have you done any kind of photometric plan at all to sh-
We have, and I can pass that out.
That'd be great.
So these are the lights shown in the plan set as well. There's just more specific information as well as a photometric plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
Again, I might have missed it. Again, in somewhat with the other hat on, accessibility. I noticed on the plan, we've got two accessible parking spaces, although in the parking summary, I didn't find it. And I don't find any details on marking and signage. Usually, the site plan will show the painting scheme, that's sort of an accepted standard, and then the requirement for an upright sign is also a requirement. It's typically the site plan that's the only place you find that, you don't find it on the building plan, so that might need to be added.
Sure. Yeah, the handicap space is shown
Yep, two of them, right.
as it will be striped, but we can add a detail, specifics, and a sign on the building at that location.
Yep. Two of them, right?
Yes.
Good catch, thank you. Any other questions?
I know it's kind of an unusual situation down there. You have sort of islands of buildings in the middle of the railroad property, Pan Am or wherever the railroad is these days. And I know at the TAC meeting, the issue came up of adding a note to the plan to reference the easement. It looks like you're going to be striping some parking spaces that aren't on your land, and maybe striping the road that's not on your land. What kind of approvals or, you know, what's covered in that easement that'll? I know you said you can't do the stormwater separation and some catch basin things because, you know, they're subsurface. But what does the easement allow you to do on the surface?
Sure, I'll let Ed speak to that, because I know it's been done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
We have a recorded general easement. It dates, I want to say forty years or more ago. And it basically is a general easement that allows us to use that area of, I guess now it's Pan Am property. So I don't have it with me tonight, but it is in the registry of deeds. And it pretty much just allows us to, we have to split the maintenance with another party, Court City Realty, who owns the Sea Trade Building behind us. But it's, I think it's just kind of a common custom now that we just, we take care of all the maintenance in the plowing and the line striping and the seal coating and whatever, you know, the paving, paving as well.
In terms of what you're doing on what I assume is Pan Am property, it's the striping of those spaces at the end of the building, the building that you're renovating, right? Because you're adding spaces there, right?
They're there. You know, they've always been there, I mean, we've always used them, they're striped currently.
Okay, so...
And that's probably covered by the lease that we have with Pan Am
Okay.
for that property.
It's hard, not knowing what's in your lease agreement and your easement, it's hard to know. We like to make sure we're not approving things on other people's property, so I was trying to think of some way to address this for those items that are, and I recognize it's a very unusual situation down there, and it's, you know, decades of past practice, but I'm just trying to think about how we might address it on the site plan. If there's some note to the plan or some, Lord knows, we've dealt with the railroad enough, so, you know, trying to get some written assent from them can be challenging, but... So it's your representation, though, that you feel that within the, that the improvements that you're proposing as part of the site plan are within your rights as a, under the easement or under the lease agreement that you have with Pan Am?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak to, for, or against this application. Second time, anyone wishing to speak to, for, or against? Third and final time. Seeing no one rise, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, no. Okay, you're going to go for it?
John told me I couldn't make any more tonight. Well, I'll make a motion on the first one to grant conditional use permit as requested.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. And the second one is a site plan.
I'll move to approve the site plan with the two stipulations in the department memo. And then I think we have a series of other issues that have come up through the discussion. I'll lead off with the accessible parking space details, both the surface painting and the upright signage. I really do think, I'm sorry, I really do think that the sprinkled pipe connecting to the building should be shown on the site plan, so I'll go with that one as well. And there are others, all others.
Okay, so we need a second, or should we throw in some additional stipulations?
You can go for some additional stipulation if you want, then we'll...
Well, this next one's going to be a question for the planning director, I think, which is, I think I'm correct, Rick, that when light spills over a property boundary, we need to do a waiver. We can do that as a waiver from the site plan, right? So that wouldn't be a stipulation, but it'd actually be a waiver to that section?
No, it's not a waiver.
Not a waiver. Something less convenient.
Something more, it's something more strict. That's a zoning requirement rather than the site plan requirement. So you would need to stipulate that a nut spill over, I believe, let me just check that.
Which is not going to be possible, I don't think. Although maybe it is possible, because actually, now that I look at this more closely, this is the building outline, not
The lot.
not the lot.
Right.
So maybe they could just demonstrate then that it doesn't spill over. So maybe that, I will add that as a stipulation, that they demonstrate that it doesn't spill over. We can't actually tell from this.
Agreed to the make the motion.
Wait, it has the lot line on it.
Where?
In green. Very faint green, green line.
Wow, this is like looking for the whale in the little dock.
If you look up at the top, and it goes zeros in blues, and then you go point one, point one, right above the point one, see the green line? That's the property line.
How do you know that?
I think so, at least.
He has very good eyesight, I guess.
Where's the bottom of the property?
Well, it comes down at an angle, and then it ties in at number thirteen and twelve.
Yep. Connect the dots.
Look at Ed.
Pretty close.
So, but what do we mean by demonstrate?
Oh, I think they are, I guess.
I guess they would need to comply with the
Comply.
on spill over.
Comply, okay, I just want to be sure.
That's good. Did you have another one? There is some spill over.
Now, I thought, Ricky, you had said something additional about signs?
Well, it was simply the accessible
Beyond, nothing beyond that?
No.
Okay.
My only other possible stipulation was how to address the issue of the representation made that this is all taking place under an existing agreement with the surrounding property owner. And I don't know, Rick, if you have any thoughts on how to, if that's now part of the public record? Or it needs to be stipulated or not? How it might affect us in the future.
Normally, we do require the owner of property on which improvements are made to sign off on them. It would be helpful, I don't know if it's possible, it'd be helpful if we could get the railroad to sign off on the application.
Or another alternative to have the city attorney review the existing
That's what I was thinking, too.
And the Pan Am lease, and to his satisfaction, feel that they comply, and not that I don't believe Ed, because I do, but it sounds like you haven't looked at them in a while, and we kind of want to have it in the public record for a variety of reasons.
Yes, Ms. Gafford?
Shouldn't the site plan refer to that reported easement? If that's what it is?
It should.
So probably a combination of both having the site plan refer to the reported easement or whatever their rights come under, and then to have the city attorney get comfort that that allows for the site plan.
It's agreeable.
I think we're pretty much set in terms of stipulations on the motion.
So what was the final stipulation regarding the light, the lighting?
Compliance.
That they comply. Which they, it looks like they almost did.
With the green line. The green line. Thank you. And did you say, do we need a second?
Yeah.
A second.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? And did you have something you wanted to address or add?
I was just going to add on the note for the easement. We'd be happy to add that recorded document to the plan. And any note that the board wishes us to add, maybe relieving the city and assuring that the owner has authority to do it, whatever language that might be.
Okay, thank you. I think in addition to that, we're thinking to have a copy of the easement reviewed by the city attorney would be helpful.
That's fine.
Any other thoughts, questions, okay? Call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. I know we have a policy, we don't typically take applications after ten, but if the board would indulge, I think we've got two public hearings left, I'd like to continue on if the board doesn't mind. Okay, thank you. That being said, we'll jump into item H, the application of M.H. Wentworth, homeowner, and 127 Parrot Avenue LLC applicant for property located on 127 Parrot Avenue, requesting site plan approval for the removal of exterior ramps, fire escape, fencing, concrete aprons, and sidewalks, the expansion of parking, and the construction of a new closed drainage system with related paving, lighting, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated side improvements. Said property is shown on assessment map 115 as lots three and three dash one, and lies within the mixed, excuse me, residential office district in the historic district.
Just going to recuse myself?
Okay, thank you. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
I am Eric Weinroth with Altus Engineering. Also with me tonight is Bob Iafola, project manager, Tim Phoenix, who's the client, as well as the project attorney, and Joe Shanley, because he likes to come into planning board meetings. We're here to, 127 Parrot Ave. LLC convert the former Compass Care facility to a professional office, law office. It's a fourteen thousand five hundred square foot building. It's shown here on the site plan. Project, Parrot Ave., South Mill Pond, Rogers Street, the existing courthouse. And then here's our main facility building. One-car garage here, and a two-car garage here. This is the Feaster Apartments. We have the mower, which is in the other property here, it's a single-family residence that abut the site. Municipal lot here, and the fire station is up there. Project's been through a process of receiving HTC approval. We've received, we've granted variances for, or variance to reduce the parking on site. We had a concept, an either-or concept, to have either parking in front of the building here and meet the parking requirements, or have a reduction in parking and have a greener area. And the Board of Adjustment chose the greener areas, that's why we're before you with a variance and a reduction in parking. What we're doing is, there are three existing driveways on the property. We're taking out one of them, making it a two-access. We're asking for a waiver for multiple driveways on the site. There's a third driveway that's existing on the garage property next door, and we're expanding some parking there, but no changes to that driveway. Have two-way access into the site with a dead end in back, a turnaround area for all the employees parking and so forth. And then there is a loop driveway here, one-way, and then one-way out, so you have additional parking on the other side of the property. The really nice thing about this project, in addition to revitalizing this area and adding some tax revenues, is that we're fixing some drainage issues. Parrot Ave. today has a lot of drainage issues in the street, they're ponding there, and we're going to be adding we're going to be adding... New catch basins in the street, and tying those into the recently constructed drainage infrastructure, those with the Court Street and Rogers Street project. And that will go into a treated stormwater area. Also, the roof drains on this site, the existing drainage on the site, and the drainage behind the site at the Feasters all ties into the sewer. We're taking that out and tying that into this drainage system, so we're really providing quite a public benefit with this. And really, that sums up the project. We're adding a lot of nice landscaping, we're taking down the trees in front of the building that are overgrown, putting in new landscaping, adding new streetscape, and I think really revitalizing the area. Any questions?
Questions for the applicant?
Just a quick one on, on the demo plan, we're taking down, and on the site plan, we're reconfiguring the fire escape. So, with the other hat, I always keep it into reconfiguring fire escape. Are we keeping it? We losing it? What's going on?
The existing one comes down, and then there's a new one that goes up in a new configuration.
Okay.
Down and rehab, and then comes back up.
Eric, I know people kind of flow through that site coming from the housing authority property, and a fire station parking lot, and is that going to still be the case there? Are there fences going up, or what's the...
Yeah. There's, well, today, there's a fence that encloses the, I guess it was like a dementia area? Dementia area in the back. What we're doing is, from a fence standpoint, we're taking down the fence between the courthouse and our property, that's a chain link fence, and it's a really kind of a nasty no man's land in there. There's going to be no fence in there, so it's going to be a green way in between. We're going to be constructing, and there's a nice solid wood fence between the residential properties. What we're going to do is take down the fence that was going to be part of this parking lot, and constructing a new solid wood fence separating out the Feaster property municipal parking lot from the site, providing a pedestrian accessway in between so that employees can access the municipal lot and continue into town. Public can, would be able to also do it, it's nothing that we're promoting in that area, but there's going to be no gate, so we're just trying to separate some of the sea of parking between the back of the Feasters, municipal lot, that private property in our site, so kind of separating that out.
So, there'll be like, is the fence going to go all the way across that back line, or part of it?
It's going to go all the way across the back line.
All the way across, and it would have gates in it, openings in it?
Just one opening, right? No, it doesn't really show in there. Right, where this walk continues, it's going to be straight across there.
So if somebody wanted to, they could walk through there, I guess?
Correct. What we're trying to do is not promote a large masses of the populace to go through. Right now, on the existing conditions plan, you can see this walkway is used quite a bit.
Right.
And we're really not trying to promote that anymore, and I don't think it's really something that the Feasters want as well, because it's public going through the back of their property.
Right, I'm thinking more of how I see people going through there and wondering, you know, what will happen there when that opening changes? If you're actually going to get more flow of people through the center of your site? But what was the rationale, I guess, for putting the opening in that location?
The rationale of putting the location in at all was so that the employees will be able to easily access downtown for lunchtime, go for a walk, and so forth, rather than having to go all the way around the courthouse and actually just walk up the pavement there or through an invisible parking lot and so forth. It really just makes it an easier access.
It's a tough thing, because I know it's private property and you don't want to invite the public intentionally across, and I'm just wondering how people will use it when they see the opening. I understand the whole employee thing, wanting to flow to town.
I mean, currently, there's actually a chain link fence here, and an opening, and there was a lot of discussion in the planning process, nothing that we were in support of to actually having vehicular traffic going through the site, and we didn't want that at all, so we kind of recognized the pedestrian aspects of it.
Thanks, Eric.
Mr. Glahill?
I have a question. On the on-street parking on the site plan, there's an X through one of the parking spots.
What is that? Right in front there.
Yes.
Because there's a fire hydrant there.
Okay. And you're getting rid of one of the handicap parking spots that are on, that's on-site?
Well, for some reason, there's a handicap parking spot in the street there, and working with DPW, they found no need for it, so it goes back on as a regular spot.
Okay.
Ms. Roberts?
I appreciate your efforts to improve drainage out there. It definitely has been a big problem for a long time, and I guess, I just wanted to follow up on your mention of that, to try to get a better sense of what you're proposing to do in terms of drainage, I guess even just thinking basically like where the water will now go that's being collected in catch basins or whatever?
Yep. Yeah, there's an existing catch basin here that goes straight into the pre-treatment system that discharges into South Mill Pine. There's also an existing municipal catch basin right here on the corner of Rogers and Parrot. What we're proposing is a new drain line up to our driveway here, catch basin there, another catch basin here, and a third catch basin there. So that's going to collect all those ponded areas in the flat part of Parrot Ave. Then we have a catch basin right here that's actually going to collect all the side of the parking lot, and we have, we're cleaning out the swale that already exists there. From what we understand with the courthouse is, well, first of all, a lot of the water from up in the municipal lot just comes sheeting down through our site, and ponds in the corner here now. And talking with courthouse maintenance, that water goes straight into their basement, and then they pump it out. So, by putting this drainage system in, adding the swale there, collecting it, and getting it into, you know, pre-treatment in the grass swale, getting it into the municipal system, we're going to correct their problem. In addition, we have, this drain line right here is actually going to be, I don't know if it's going to be a public drain, but it's, we have an easement with the city that comes up. We have a catch basin here to collect the runoff from the back of the site, and then we're providing another catch basin on the Feaster's property, which they've shown support for, and that's going to collect the runoff coming off the municipal lot, because we're going to put a curb line in there, so it's not going to continue rushing down the hill. Feasters have agreed, Portsmouth Housing, to extend the line out to this existing catch basin, which is currently tied into the sewer. So, it's really, it's a comprehensive little plan to fix a lot of things in the area. As I said earlier, this roof is tied into the sewer, and we're going to have replumbered interior and connect it into the drainage system as well.
Great, thank you for elaborating.
Top left catch basin, Eric, I think it should be catch basin five, it's not labeled, just a...
This one?
Yeah, I think that's catch basin five, but there's just no label on it.
Okay.
You may just want to add that to the plans, and I had, I thought the plan was well designed and simple, but well designed, so. Other questions for the applicant? Ms. Geffert?
Yes. I just have one question about the sign in the front that says "Sign with Lights," and it may be that it's just the same sign with different words, but I'm curious about that. I didn't see a detail. I did see the detail about parking in Danny Hovell's, oh, I did see the detail about the parking spot for Danny, but other than that, I didn't see the detail on the front sign.
That, I think all the partners enjoyed that note on the plan, but the front sign, it hasn't been worked out in detail yet, but essentially, we're going to be changing out the panel for the business sign. The law practice is not going to be taking the entire building, they're going to be taking, I believe, half of, or at least half of it, and so that that sign will get worked out later on, but the intent is that we're going to use the same location and the same sign style.
I just don't want to get stuck with a sign that we don't like because it's on the plan and it says "Sign with Lights," so that, it's just a...
You speak to that if you want.
It's not, for example, a sign wall, is it?
It's the existing sign.
Can we get your name and address?
With the existing lights.
Can we get your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, my name is Bob Iafola, Marriott Management Group, I'm the project manager. At this point, we don't contemplate changing the sign at all, it's the existing sign, the existing lighting, and the only thing that we changed on it is lettering, which, you know, is not covenant of the ordinance. If in the process of the project, you know, that changed, and things can change because of a requirement of a prospective tenant, then we would obviously have to come back and, you know, and go through the sign permitting process for that. But right now, it's exactly what's there. We're not planning on moving it. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just don't know whether that's, there should be more detail.
Maybe I can help, but I do have to probably correct one thought of yours. I'm assuming the existing sign talks about the existing facility.
Yes.
So, the change in content requires a whole permitting process, so you would need to do that.
Change in lettering does?
Oh, yeah. And so, it's considered a different sign, and people don't think of it as that way, but the ordinance does, so you'll just have to go through that process when the time comes, and then we'll look at it. Yeah. I mean, the only thing you might do is on the site plan, just say "existing sign," use the word "existing" in that.
Is that there?
It's there.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wishing to speak too far against the application? Second time? Third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. Ms. Hayden?
A question for the planning director, which is, it sounds like we need to do a driveway waiver?
Yes.
Do we need to do that before we vote on the site plan?
Yes.
Okey dokey. What's the section again, one point?
Section three point three point two three. Do regulations.
Three point, three point two three. How long?
Just, there's also a second waiver for the sidewalk connectivity to the street, so just so you don't forget that.
Sidewalk connection from the street to the front entrance?
To the building, and that's on the plan, but I just don't want to forget that.
Include that into...
Do you have the section number for that, Eric?
Is it on the...
Section five point one one.
Let's start with the...
Note nine.
Note nine.
Ms. Hayden?
I'll make a motion that we waive the driveway section three point three point two point three of the site review regs to allow more than one driveway on the lot.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye.
I'll make a motion that we provide a waiver to section five point one one as per note nine on the site plan, which is relative to waiver required for no sidewalk connection from the site to the city street.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Those are the two required waivers. I believe now we can vote on the site plan approval.
I'll move approval. The stipulation is noted in the staff report, four stipulations.
Is there another? No, just one, just one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay. Construction management plan. Probably warranted here.
Yeah. And if they add, just have note catch basin five.
Catch basin five.
Yep.
Second.
And did we want to relabel that sign existing?
Doesn't hurt, on the site, on the...
On the site plan?
On the site plan, yeah.
I think that may clarify, so. Second. Any discussion? Call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Cindy, good luck.
Thank you very much, Eric.
That brings us to the last public hearings, new business, item H, the application of McLeod Enterprises Inc., owner, for property located 1190 Lafayette Road, requesting amended site plan approval for the reconfiguration of parking spaces, the addition of parking lot islands, the relocation of a driveway entrance off Lafayette Road, and installation of new curbing and sidewalk with related paving, lighting, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated side improvements. Said property is shown on assessment map 252 as lot eight and lies within the Gateway District. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Lorden from MSC Engineers. Appreciate you staying late tonight so we can be heard. I will be brief, representing Kevin McLeod, the owner of the Comfort Inn. You're very familiar with the site and the project. There's nothing that's proposed here that you haven't seen in the past. We've worked very closely with MHF and Four Amigos to coordinate the two sites, and what you're seeing here is an amended site plan that was requested from the city to be submitted to show and allow the work that's being done on our site. The intent of these plans is just exactly that, to show the work that's going to be done on the site. We try to keep it as simple as possible by keeping details on the MHF plans and just referring to them. Also, a lot of the driveway work that's being proposed in this area, they have a whole special plan for that, we refer to that. What we're proposing is four, one, two, three, and four traffic islands, those are raised six inches in curve, a proposed extension of the crosswalk. The driveway itself is being reconfigured, as you're familiar with, from here a little further south. The rest of, oh, they're also doing the sewer and a drainage upgrade. The rest of the site's staying the same. The building, the circulation, majority of the site, nothing's changing. We currently have one hundred and twenty-five full, not partial, some of these are partial, one hundred and twenty-five full parking spaces on the site. We're losing eighteen, or fourteen, based on these three islands being added, but with this transfer of land in here, we're gaining thirty-three spaces. So we'll be, have a total of one hundred and forty-four, or one hundred and forty-three is required. We'll be taking a plan that's non-conforming and bring it to conformance. We're hoping that this will ease some of the board's problems with the backing in. This is not final, nothing's been submitted. We're on schedule and we're planning to submit for a variance to the ZVA. The only variance we're going for right now is parking between the building and the street. Plans are well underway for development. We've kind of been waiting for them next door to get their plans final before we move too far forward. They've had a lot of changes, and initially, we were trying to keep up with them, and we decided to hold back a little bit. We then will be moving on to site plan review in the next month or two from now, either in September or October, a submission. Comfort Inn has shown a desire to develop this property for quite some time now. In the mid-two thousands, there was a supermarket proposed, there was proposed work on that site. When that site dropped off and they didn't execute it, a lot of that work wasn't done on this site either. Mr. McLeod is very interested in developing the site and working with MHF and Four Amigos to get the sites coordinated. to get the sites coordinated, and we've done that. The main thing that we want to show in this plan is a full curb along the whole width of this. There's going to be no traffic backing in or coming out. That's our design. We are proposing one entrance right here off of that main driveway to enter our site. We had looked at a couple of different locations. Initially, we had it right here. That was just too confusing. There was too much going on at that intersection. We did move it back to try to align it with that, found the same thing. There was just too much movement. So we tried to have our proposed intersection to that driveway a little bit out of the way to avoid some of the conflict. I don't want to get into too much of this detail because that's not what we're reviewing tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the other site plan. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant? No questions? Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the public wishing to speak two-four against the application, second time, third and final time, two-four against, seeing no one rise, I'll now close the public hearing. Ms. Hayden?
Oh, I'd love to make a motion. Would like to make a motion. To grant site plan approval would be, excuse me, two stipulations listed. And, if I get a second, I have...
Second.
Now, when we approved the previous plan, we said that no work was going to be carried out on this site until whatever we had at that time. Until these guys got a revised site plan. Given the actual motion or the stipulation that we crafted, are we happy with no longer having no work carried out on this? Do we feel we're completely covered? I got one lawyer saying yes.
I guess, what we said is that unless they have curbing or some sort of barrier all along the travelway, they can't get a building permit.
Right. That ties the other site. So my question is, do we feel we're adequately covered? Because that's not what's before us right now.
Well, that's what I was going to say. We're approving a site plan that...
Isn't before us.
That...
Well, this site plan that's on the table is before us. And so I just want to make sure people have a comfort...
That's what I'm saying. The site plan that is before us shows parking spaces that can back into the travelway. I mean, I guess it may not matter because the other project can't get a building permit
Right.
with this approved. So something's got to change.
Yes, it's a little catch 22. That's why I wanted to just visit it before we voted on.
Ms. Gafford?
I think that this site plan is okay because it has adequate parking. It does not?
No, I'm just coughing.
Oh, you actually had a cough. Sorry.
Must be past 10:30.
So essentially, what we needed from them to, tonight, was something that showed no driveway, where they used to have a driveway, and a driveway where they're now allowing a driveway, that shows adequate parking and that shows the drainage easement reconfiguration. And we've got that. And effectively, this is fine. Oh, and, you know, all the other stuff that's on their site, like the islands, the four islands that he pointed out. And as long as he still has enough parking with all that junk, he's fine. But the moment that the other one wants to put up that barrier, his parking goes away. So they can't put up the barrier unless this applicant comes back to us with a reconfigured parking plan that shows adequate parking and that complies with the zoning ordinance otherwise.
I got it. Yeah, makes sense.
And I would just follow up by saying, I think you, in order for the previous site plan to be really approved, you really have to approve this site plan because they have to be consistent.
Right.
Correct. So we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the chair votes aye. Move on to schedules and requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Letter from Steve, Stephen Kelm, requesting an easement from the city to access his property at Edie Wright Avenue. This matter was postponed after July 19, 2012 Planning Board meeting.
The city council is in the process of disposing of the Connie Bean property, and I think that, I think that...
I'm recusing myself.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Anthony.
Sorry. So I think that it's still premature. I think we need to figure out with the city council or with the city manager what the disposition of this property is going to be and whether it makes more sense for an easement, if an easement is granted, to be granted by the city before it's disposed of or by a private purchaser after it's disposed of. So I think that's, still needs to be discussed.
And we want to postpone it?
We should postpone, yes.
Move to postpone?
Second.
Till next, till next month?
Till next month, yes.
Okay.
Until next month.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, the chair votes aye. Move to other business, the request from 233 Vaughn Street LLC owner. The property located at 233 Vaughn Street, for one-year extension of site plan approval, which received approval on May 20, 2010, and amended site plan approval on August 18, 2012.
As noted in the report, the memorandum, this is, normally, it's a straight administrative decision to, for the board to extend the first one-year extension of site plan approval. And again, this is, this was, it got an initial extension by having the plan amended in August 2011. The issue here is that the property hasn't, the development hasn't happened. We have a site plan agreement that has not been complied with. So this is an unusual situation, but I've recommended some stipulations to make sure that we're kind of brought up to speed, that the property is stabilized if it's not going to start construction this construction season, and that we extend the site plan security as, through the future completion of work. And a slight change in stipulation number three, I think that the phrase in a timely fashion is somewhat vague, so I would recommend that if either of the above stipulations is not met as stated in stipulations number one and two, this extension of site plan approval shall be null and void.
Okay. Ms. Hayden?
And is the intent, Rick, that it would be immediately null and void? Does that go without saying, or should we say...
I'm not sure what that means, actually. Avoid, null and void as of October 15.
Right. Right, just so it's really clear.
Yes. Yes, by the day... Yes, I can wordsmith that. I know what you mean.
Yes.
It's by October 15 or by October 1.
Right. It's not null and void as of August 19, 2013. It's...
We need a motion on that, correct?
Yes.
Ms. Hayden?
Who wants to speak?
If you want to come up?
Carla Goodnight from CJ Architects, representing 233 Vaughn Street. I was, just was wondering what the final stipulations were because we were unaware what they might be in our previous discussions. So I wanted to attend tonight to just hear and possibly comment on any questions that you may have or what the stipulations are for the extension.
I can read them. Number one, if construction under the approved site plan is not substantially underway by October 1, 2012, the property owner shall fully stabilize, loom, and cede the entire site by October 15, 2012. Number two, by October 1, 2012, the property owner shall extend the site plan security through February 18, 2013, or six months after completion of all site work, whichever is later. Such extension shall be in a form approved by the city attorney. And three, if either of the above stipulations is not met as stated in stipulations one and two, this extension of site plan approval shall be immediately null and void.
Okay. The second stipulation through February of 2013, I believe that the security has already been renewed through March of 2013 because it was originally, it was originally up to expire in '12, and then it was renewed for a year to '13 in March of this year. And we can supply documentation to that effect so that you have some documents stating that it's extended through February 13. We have an appraisal underway right now, which will take six weeks to complete, and we will need two weeks to close following that appraisal, and probably an additional four weeks to mobilize for construction. And I was, would like the board to consider that timeline in stipulation one.
What does that mean?
If you, we would be looming and seeding the lot according to the date that you've set of October, probably three weeks before we would rip it all out for construction.
I mean, you can't loom and cede in November, right?
No.
So it's got to be loom and seeded by October.
Typically, it's October 15 is the latest you can do it.
Are you, are you saying then that you are going to be starting construction the second week of November?
On or about that time.
I think we leave this to, yes, Mr. Glad...
This plan went through some changes that wasn't approved by the HTC. So are they coming for the HTC?
Yes, we are.
Okay, you are.
Yes, we are.
Because I'm just wondering, because that, depending on how the HTC carries itself, this could delay this a little bit, too.
I, I think we keep it the way it is because I don't think there's a definitive date as to start of construction. So worst case, they loom it and cede it, which isn't a big deal. And then if, whenever you start, you start.
Okay.
And that way, there, I think this board's covered. I think you're covered if there's a glitch and it's a month or two later. I think we leave it the way it is. That's okay with the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, thank you. We need a motion on that, correct?
Yes.
Did you make a motion, Ms. Hayden?
I didn't. I haven't made one in so long. I would vote to grant an extension of site plan approval to August 18, 2013, with the three stipulations as just read out by the planning director.
Okay. Second. Second discussion? We'll call the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed, the chair votes aye. Planning directors' report?
You've had a chance to read them. I have nothing more to add at this late hour. We had, the thing that's important to note is that we have scheduled a work session on the city council referral regarding zoning for assisted living facilities. And that work session will be Thursday, September 13, which is the Thursday before the regular planning board meeting.
Okay. I don't think Cindy needs to put that on the calendar.
Okay.
Do we have anything else? Cindy, we kept you here as late as we possibly could to enjoy you as long as we could.
That's why it's so late.
So before we call for adjournment, okay. 10:30. Thank you. I did want to thank you again. It's been my pleasure, the board's pleasure, to have you on the board. I can't thank you enough. We're going to miss you immensely and look forward to having David Allen come aboard on in September. So with that, I'd like to call for adjournment.
Salute.
Good night, thank you.